Hello. Are you happy to be here? Hello. Hello. Yeah. How are you doing? Good to see you. Well, this is your day. They must have covered that flight of the thing. Yeah, maybe he does. I said, look, it's a little bit over time. Only only one. But they have, I said, very well. We have one board member. I do everything except except I can't. This is in two for that full of all. So all the way to the side. I know what I'm talking about.
The only way that we have to have this. I am.
Maybe not be. I am. I kind of agree. Can I talk to the?
Is the only thing you do with those is you do a call. On this season.
Yes, I could say it's all up to the pounds once.
We first have to know just how easy it is possible. The I'm on a team.
Yeah, and it all depends on what kind of system they have.
Well, this is revision. So is this revised? What have? Oh, the package from before. Oh, yeah, so is there a B plan or is this a C plan? Okay, fine, this is the new plan. All right, so you're testing. And this is. Okay, you got the problem. So now it's one. You're assessing what's different between this plan and this plan, correct?
Do we get the? It's not much for us whether copies. First, this is the. This is really. I suppose the main plan. I suppose. I'm sorry. My heart is. So first of all. Shouldn't what eight thirty? But what if I should see? I don't have a price.
I need your.
So. Has he told me? She paid and dressed every one of my.
She what?
She dressed every one of my.
And where she? You'll do it this way.
Excuse me, ma'am. Do you know if any plans went to the the planning board history?
You said June. All right. Why don't we do this? Why was it canceled? This is next. I don't remember.
That was Nancy Hasler. Sorry. What was the first? You have passed that revised after April service. People just. Now please revise April service.
Great, Jason, so I'll put. I just called it. Put his.
Yeah. I can't have it right here. There's a mic next to you. Just go to the bottom. Yeah, you're plugging our territory.
Hi, I'm David. And. So we should be able to hear. Go ahead, say something. All right, so then we get. What's that? So. Could he? Yeah, we'll be able to hear that. We'll put it right by the microphone. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hurley. I have committed an acrimony. It comes to my attention that probably he hasn't been to a word hearing and he has to be given the open office. I will do that at the outset. Once we do the flag and get. Or I have him on standby right now. Pardon?
May I give you a signal?
May.
We're seeing.
I'll say right next to. Okay, everyone will have to speak into the microphone, so commit an acrimony in here. So we'll have to get right into the mic when we speak.
Will we be able to hear?
Yes. Yes. I might stand here as her recording the meeting. All right, should we get the other members? Command? Yes, you are. I have you on speakerphone. So if you say anything, you know, if you want to ask a question or you want to say something, I'm going to be standing right here and I'll put it right up to the microphone so you.
I wonder if I'm able to hear everybody else from off that.
You will be able to. I'll make sure that everyone goes. You can hear when people go directly into the microphone, right?
Um, I don't have that yet.
Okay. Where is the? Did you turn up the volume?
If I do, it's going to spike again like crazy. That's pretty much how it goes without beating back as all those other mics. It was all professionally set years ago.
All right, well. And I will make the point of bringing the phone to the person who's speaking. So. You know, somebody speaks. Okay.
For being called up to try this. I believe this is. Very nice.
Terry, do you have the?
I didn't know. Prior and unfortunately it's not on the computer.
Okay, so I'll read it. The time date, location of this meeting is published in the Atzerberg Park Press and was sent to the store ledger and is published in the store ledger as well. I have. It was sent to the store ledger forty eight hours in advance, but it was published in the ledger today. It was published in the press forty eight hours in advance. The public has a right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets all criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission. Commitment in Ackerman was. He hasn't been sworn in yet. We just learned that through his duties on planning board. So Committee in Ackerman, can you hear me? All right, please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that? I'm sorry. Okay, I please state your name. I.
I now that I have a name, please help me.
That I will uphold and defend.
I'll uphold and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will fully faithfully and fairly.
That I will fully faithfully and fairly.
Perform all of the duties of the office.
Of all the duties of the office.
Of the Lake and Tatchet Planning Board.
Of the Lake and Tatchet Planning Board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, congratulations. And. It's been quiet here, but thank you for joining us.
I don't know if I explained something, but. To meetings because I know you're of opinion that it might not be the end of the world for the final members to speak to an applicant offline, but. Alan Hensel has helped me many times, he's secreted to me many times, not. So it's hard to keep track who calls me and who doesn't call me. Usually I get swarmed beginning of the year. I'm surprised that I didn't get swarmed for. I must have had something going on at first meeting, but but I don't typically show up. I always tell Ali or I see or whoever that if they need me for a form, please call me. But I try, you know, I don't remember who spoke to me, who didn't speak to me and and I don't like, I definitely don't like voting on showing up to meetings and voting on applications because I may find myself in a position where I vote on something where I discuss application.
And Mr. Hensel and Mr. Hensel and Mr. Secker are correct, and I'll reiterate that to the board members and to the members of the audience. It's inappropriate and improper to contact members of the planning board to discuss your application with them. So I'm going to instruct the planning board members once again not to have any discussions with any applicants about the merits of an application. So if someone knocks on your door, calls you, say, our attorney has advised us that it's inappropriate for you to be discussing a case with me. That that said.
You know, they do a lot of committeemen and and planning board members. People call me and it's assuming that I can provide, even though I feel like some other quote final number probably could give them the best of it, so I should talk to them. But I tell them like I will not be able to vote on applications. Should I show up to the final? Remind me that I told you about this because I'm very well forget. And, you know, I just don't, I don't like taking a chance because I don't remember and I don't want to create violations, so. That's why I don't show up to to get that out there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, we have an agenda this evening. Yeah, I'm going to take the roll call. Help back the members, Chairman.
Please just speak.
The first. Mr. Ackerman.
Mr. Ackerman, you can hear.
Mr. Ackerman, present.
Yeah, I, yeah, oh, yeah, I heard that. I heard it.
Thank you. Mr. Raisin.
Here.
Mr. Reddick. Mr. Hertzler. And Mr. Stern. Thank you.
Okay, square your professionals.
Mr. Buck, do you swear affirm the testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
We have a cycle on the agenda today. I think we know the SP, do you know?
I believe it's SP.
Twenty three fifty seven AA, Chairman.
That's the same number?
Correct.
I see this report. Would you like to go through their report?
I will go through the report, Chairman. As indicated, it is literally from two thousand twenty, last year. I will caution the board that our our comments are based on the pre-existing concept and we and the board have just been handed revised copies of a circulation plan, which I have not looked at yet. But the comments that I have in our June twenty third letter are based on the previously revised plan set from new lines that were revised to April thirty in two thousand twenty per their title block.
If you turn down the volume on your phone, it probably don't hear. Just a quick.
I'm. Okay, no, that's okay. I just don't want to get feedback, so I'm going to lower the volume. Okay, go ahead.
You'll know when you want to say something?
Yeah, and and I will know, I'll just lower it a little. Go ahead.
Sorry.
All right, I'm not going to go through the whole letter, but I just want to resume.
Which letters is that?
It's our review letter dated June twenty third, two thousand twenty.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to point out in the letter, you just said that you didn't have a vehicle circulation plan, but just to refresh your memory on the bullet point number four, it indicates that there is a copy of a vehicle circulation plan as part of the court.
This is his thing.
This is that part of the original plan. That plan has changed, correct?
No. And that this plan is before you board tonight, is the same plan that we intend to project.
We're getting mixed messages because I'm being told that a plan has been revised, which is the plan that was handed with this packet tonight entitled Change of Use and Consolidation Improvement Plan revised to July twenty sixth, two thousand twenty nine.
No, that 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 plan reflects the fact of some discussion that we had with Mr. Hertz's claim that indicated certain issues that were trying to resolve prior.
Is that plan or is that plan not part of your application?
The application before tonight is a plan that was generated as a result of June twenty third, two thousand twenty.
All right, so the board is to disregard this?
No, not disregarding. The board can consider any changes that the board is inclined to consider, actually doing every application. The board wants increase the width of sidewalk or wants to make a certain change, add additional shrubbery, things of that sort. More than happy to do that. Mr. Hertz is here and he's present. I understand he's.
All right, all right, let's do this. The these revisions, so you want these dealt with along the same vein as somebody would go up and change a line on a parking stall or add in a grass area. These are changes that you're making at the meeting.
Wait, there's no change at the meeting. The act, this was clear as far as our positions. Our position is the application was submitted and has been. The the letter we had received from Mr. Voight dated June twenty third, two thousand twenty, we were, we intend to address those comments and Mr. Lyons had certainly addressed them because some of the comments that he is addressing in the letter are also comments that were concerned by Mr. Dean, who is the expert hired by by the objector Rabbi Tenen. During the process, we will go through the current application. It's our intention to address the report of Mr. Voight and then if the board is still inclined, we can spend a minute to go through some of the recommended recommendations from the from the expert hired by Rabbi Tenen. If the board, the reason we didn't, we didn't submit revised plans was very frankly, we're not going to presume that the board likes those recommendations. We will present some of those items to the board. The board is still inclined to say, not a bad idea. A good idea, we'll incorporate that into the plan.
Right.
No different than any other application.
So from right now, these revisions, we're going to not focus on those or address those of Mr. Vogt's review.
That's. Part of the review.
Okay.
Engineer gave us an order these days tonight. Just so you know. And I did get your request.
Okay, so so Mr. Vogt, why don't we just go through your actual review of those of the plans that they are planning to present and go forward with and then we'll respond. You know.
Sure. Can Terry or John or Phil or Council? We heard, I'm trying to remember, I know we heard this a year, year and a half ago. What did we decide then? Where are we proceeding? I'm trying to remember where we were so we can understand better where we're going tonight.
I can just give you a word.
Please.
We had originally submitted a set of plans. Mr. Lyons had submitted a set of plans back from January of two thousand nineteen. We we received a review letter from from Mr. Voight dated February seventeenth, I believe it was, two thousand twenty.
I think he pronounced it, but. Annoyed every time you say Voight. I've been calling.
Secretary. So, Mr. Vogt. We had a hearing that was scheduled for March third, March third, two thousand twenty, at which time the majority of the meeting was spent talking about jurisdictional issues, whether or not it's a site plan, not a site plan, et cetera. At that point, the board did not hear anything relative to the application, but voted to indicate that they felt that this was a site plan exemption.
That's what it was.
And and it was a vote taken and the board said, yes, this is a site plan exemption. There was a recommendation by Mr. Vogt to change the plan relative to certain comments that he had in his February report. We did that. Mr. Mr. Lyons sent a revised set of plans in along with the vehicle circulation plan. His revised set of plans went through at the fourth thirty, two thousand twenty.
Got it.
His, Mr. Vogt's report was generated, which is the one that we just described, June twenty third, two thousand twenty. Unfortunately, we don't know what happened after that. That's right. So the June twenty third report. The most recent report reflected the changes that were made by Mr. Lyons in the second time.
So we're really just picking up where we would have been in June, late June twenty twenty.
That's exactly right. Actually, scheduled, I think we're scheduled to June twenty eighth and. It was around the beginning of June, middle of June of two thousand twenty and then obviously. And the matter's been scheduled to several times since then. You know, it's high on the agenda and whatever reason we're reaching the last, the last meeting, as a matter of fact, we were, you know, ready to proceed, but unfortunately we're not able to be here. And also meeting before that, we were scheduled. before that, we were scheduled. And so it was scheduled a couple of times. My clients will actually forget this over with and resolve. It's fairly simple, straightforward.
Okay. That helped a lot. Thank you.
So in terms of Mr. Vogt's review letter, where, you know, we, we got, you were, you were, to grab a little bit, not disrespecting that phrase, I can't think of a better one. You weren't a, you were stopped while you were partially through your letter. Yeah, I, I honestly don't recall the initial hearing from last year. It sounds like the determination was that this would, would be heard as a change of use. I don't know how further we got. I don't know whether we put the relief in the record.
I think we should stop again from that point. When we voted on last time that's a site exemption, that's okay. But this application, we should stop again. I don't know which board members were here.
But I don't think we even had substantive testimony. I think Counsel is right. We were fighting.
We didn't. We should start at this.
Yeah, so this, so, so.
We're starting afresh with the application. Never really got to the point of what's before the board to actually present, what's before the board to. So I think we all agree with that.
What I would recommend, Chairman, is to proceed with, let me go through the June review, and then we're going to hear subsequent testimony, I suspect, based upon some of our comments. So I'm, I'm going to begin on the June twenty-third review, and I'm going to start towards the bottom of page two, if everyone's with me, um, per our review of the existing plan set.
May I, for one moment, Mr. Hirsch wants to address the idea of starting anew. And in fairness to him, um, can he address the board on that issue?
Okay.
Mr. Hirsch, please give your appearance.
Come on, okay.
How you want, I just...
Why you want to?
Yeah. That's fine. You can come here. I could, for, for a couple of boards around.
Make sure it's on.
I, I told them to go there. My mistake. That's all. And it's probably not going to be my last tonight. And it probably wasn't my first either.
Make sure it's on the camera.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Thomas J. Hirsch, and we have confirmation since of Israel. Um, I don't want to belabor this with a lot of, uh, discussion about where we were at the first meeting, but there are a couple of, I think, important aspects that I don't totally agree with Mr. Shea's statements or some of the comments by the board. That the first hearing was March third. Okay.
Two thousand twenty.
Two thousand twenty, right. And it was, uh, an application to be exempt from site plan. Uh, we, at that time, took a position that, in which I don't think the board was aware that this application never, ever had a site plan. Uh, we pointed out your ordinance to give grounds for exemption. None of them applied. Uh, the development came about by getting a Sony Malteser to issue an administrative approval that these were equivalent to classrooms, uh, based on school. I'm supposed to be on the same stuff. I won't call them that with legal argument. But we presented all that information to the board to say, the idea of exemption was, before we had a site plan, now you're going to change something. So you don't have, you can be exempt. Anyway, during the hearing, as well, at towards the end, we were going back and forth because we had some discrepancies, sort of missing information on the plan that he pointed out. And he spoke to Mr. Lyons on the record saying, you remember the childcare center application we had, uh, before with you and we beat you up on the first case. In the first hearing, you maybe came back with all this information about the number of students, a drop off, pick up that whole thing. Can you do that again? And he said, yes, all that information. So it seemed like everybody was cycling. Uh, that seems to be what was requested. However, the board, and I agree with Mr. Shea, did take a vote, which was somewhat of a bruiser to me, but, uh, that was a site plan exemption, even though they agreed to submit all that information. So it was like, example, we're going to submit all site plan, that information. So now, I don't know if that wasn't clear before if all the members here and member on the phone, uh, were present for that hearing because it's part of the same application. So if weren't present for that hearing, unless there's an affidavit that you read the transcript, could vote on this application.
They would not be able to vote. We would be able to have a quorum and hear the case.
Yes.
But the, the, Mr. Hirsch is correct. In order to vote on a case where there's been previous hearings, uh, you have this...
I'm sure my question, do, if we voted on...
He said he can't, he said he can't hear.
And I, I did not come over. Uh, what I just advised the board is Mr. Hirsch is correct. If somebody, uh, we could have a quorum and we could have the meeting, but you would be unable to vote on the case, um, until you have, uh, testified or provided an affidavit that says that you've listened to the, to the...
Even if you start over again?
You start over again, then no, then you don't have to do that. They can, they can...
My question, I'm just asking, Jackson.
And we do that frequently.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Once we took a vote, then isn't that two separate issues that we, we did a site plan exemption, and now we're going on the merits of the case?
You could, you could deal with that way. It's like a bifurcated issue and, and that issue is resolved and that vote is what it was.
So how, what do you mean?
And now the merits of the application. I, I don't have an issue with, uh, here taking the merits of the application and relying on the testimony. You didn't have opposition into the, uh, the testimony on the, on the merits of the last case, right? We never got to the merits. We never, we never went to them. Well, there were new plans submitted that were reviewed by Mr. Vogt. That's clearly indicated in the June twenty-third letter.
Please come, Mr. Shea, come closer.
If I may, if I may. It, it's really not fair to say we didn't get into the application. Mr. Vogt's report was front and center as to the missing items that they had. This was a discussion about the case. And a lot of that information about how these trailers came to be where they are. Now, all of that information is critical to all your considerations.
You're responsible. Mr. Shea, do you want to start again? And the, the issue aside?
Mr. Chairman, very highly, we have to start again because we never got...
Now start again about the whole of site plan exemption.
No, no, the board's, the board's voted on that issue. That's, that's more of the...
Mr. Hirsch feels that...
No, it's not. It was a vote that was taken. On your minutes, vote was taken, application submitted, it was, and was a vote taken by the full board that was present at that point in time. It was a special place on the record, vote taken. Mr. Mr. Hirsch, he could take appeal if he so desires. He could, he could file, and he, the appeal was in his own office.
Not unless I were turning, but you're willing to continue.
So let me respond with that. You can't, to say to start over, we had over two hours of providing information to the board at that first hearing. So unless you want to repeat all that, you can argue that, well, let me finish, sir. You can argue that you already, you took a vote, but all that information that was transmitted as part of the public record is not in everybody's brains if they weren't there.
Well, let's do this then. Let, let, let's see how it goes.
All right.
Uh, we had, Mr. Shea wants to present the merits of this matter, and we can hold that issue in abeyance and see how it goes. Um, and if it comes time that they're finished with their merits, uh, you know, Mr. Hirsch has, uh, issues where his witnesses are not here tonight. Um, so let's see how it goes. And I would recommend that we, uh, proceed on the merits of the case because it might not get to the point where we take a vote tonight. Can we establish who was here? John?
I'm waiting for the minutes.
I was at that meeting. I was at that meeting.
Does anybody have the minutes at that meeting?
Yes, I do.
Does the same minutes we voted?
Is, is, is Committeeman Ackerman, was he in the meeting?
No, he wasn't.
So we only have three there to...
Who lost one there?
Well...
Excuse me, Chairman. Does anyone know the date of the last hearing?
March third.
March third? Two thousand.
I'm trying to see if they have the meeting minutes online.
I have, I have the meeting minutes right here. If you do a second. And I just want to make sure it's really clear as well, if I could take the mic for a second.
You can show them.
The motion was made and it's cert, it's certified in your minutes.
You showed Mr. Jackson.
Like I just placed it there. Certified, fire, fire board secretary, the vote taken by the board members' presence, and the board members' names here, as the site plan exemption. But at the same time, we were required to submit back to Mr. Vogt a revised set of plans.
Well, for Mr. Mr. Shea, then, let's put that issue aside for right now. Right now, we're just determining what members were, uh, are eligible that don't have to listen to the transcripts.
Mr. Jackson, do you feel comfortable saying this is a issue?
No.
I, I think it's always what we call an interlocutory issue, um, the, the board. But I, but I think that decision having been made, it would be unusual to reverse on that. Uh, I think you should look at the merits of the case and look at that decision as having been made. Unless something comes up that causes you to change your mind and say, we overvoted, we made a mistake, and we won't, we won't want to change the orders. I mean, it's, it's like a, uh, even though it's interlocutory, that was a decision, there was a vote the second. So I think we should put that behind us.
But we put work in that. It doesn't make a difference. Who was at that meeting?
I, I agree with you.
No, but we, we have a forum.
But Mr. Hirsch has, uh, uh, in order to understand the flavor of the entire case, there was a lot of information that was presented at that.
You said if somebody wasn't here, they can't vote, but they can constitute part of the...
Yes.
Can be raised.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so...
Where are we going? I mean, do we need a board to vote?
No, if you have five, which we do, you have a quorum. But I think Counsel is saying, we have, those three who were present can vote. The other two can ask questions, but they cannot vote.
I think we need four or five people.
Right. Five people. In order to take a vote, there have to be five people who are, who've heard the whole thing.
Oh, do we have a problem?
Not in, in voting on the merits of the case.
Mr. Jackson, how will you continue? If somebody's not listening to that, who else?
Well, I, 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 I'm inclined to think that you don't have to because we've, this is like, uh, it's a, it's a, the merits of the application are different than that decision.
Mr. Hirsch is saying...
I, I, I hear what he's saying.
That's why it's not active what you say.
Well, I, I...
It's not active what you say. But clearly, the reports reflect, because the reports, the reports clearly reflect Mr. Vogt, their report based upon revised set of plans after the March third hearing, and was based upon his prior report, November seventeenth. Plans were revised, new report issued, and then were scheduled for a hearing. And here is something for, as set forth in the report, a change of use, site plan exemption, as was voted on by the board. Site plan exemption issue was brought on table, and we were going to proceed with the application at that point, eleven percent, whatever data, whatever information the board was so inclined to ask, along with asking Mr. Hirsch's and Mr. Vogt's questions as well. So we are in exactly the same position as we would have been back in June two thousand twenty, Mr. Hirsch arrived. If Mr. Hirsch arrived here in June two thousand twenty, would he have been going over the same thing that was decided in March of two thousand twenty? I think not. The board would have said, now we made that decision already. Let's move forward the application. That's what we passed more at this point.
So what the, what the, what the...
It's not about me. I, where I would have argued, it's about who can legally vote. That's all. I have to disagree. You made a quorum. It's to start the meeting.
All right, Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
The, um, according to the motion by the ministers, which appear to be the correct ones and all except Mr. Shea's representation, Mr. Stern voted in the affirmative, Mr. Sable voted no, Mr. Hirsch voted in affirmative, Mr. Renner, affirmative, Mr. Isaacson affirmative, and Mr. Raisik affirmative. So, uh...
I wasn't a Renner question.
Yeah, Renner was here, Raisik, everyone was here. Um, the, the only one who wasn't was Committeeman Ackerman.
Mr. Sable.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable now says he has a conflict. So, uh, so what my recommendation is, is that we consider the case and, um, we probably will not be able to vote until Committeeman Ackerman has had an opportunity to listen to the tapes and then vote. But that's just to vote. We, the way this is...
We're not going to vote tonight.
The diagram is that why can't we...
Why we submit your testimony?
Yeah, Mr. Sable, why can't we set our...
Well, Mr. Mr. Renner.
I thought it was a site plan exemption.
If I may address Mr. Renner, I do not believe that is a unreasonable approach to this. It's a bifurcated matter. Um, the board voted one way after a full discussion, deliberation. And I, I don't know that that information is germane to the merits of the site plan application.
Continue. And for the benefit of the law, I would ask Mr. Ackerman to listen to those who have...
I, I, I see all the board members nodding their head. It seems like that's what the consensus is, but I, I think we should hold that decision in abeyance until the moment of truth comes because we may not have to address it. If we do have to address it, then the board will determine how it wants to proceed at that time.
Okay.
So...
We're going to proceed. It's fine. I will my position under a pretty... The only other, I'll take five minutes.
Mr. Hirsch, please run into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I will take five minutes to explain the background about how we got here tonight and why I have no witnesses here tonight. Uh, we received an email from Mr. Vogt, actually my expert, Mr. Dean did, um, at eleven, no, nine seventeen, uh, responding to Mr. Dean's email, asking, we're going to be planning file, what's the status of the hearing, just any more. And he said...
Nine seventeen, eight.
Gary, I'm sorry.
Wait, when is this? What, when, when?
Gary.
This morning?
This is, oh, this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Gary, there is no meeting tonight, nor is there an application rescheduled for the next eight, you know, August thirty-three meeting. Uh, and then in the same email, we submitted to Mr. Fein's plan, new lines need to resubmit a design for the application, not a concept, not an exhibit, incorporating all practical traffic revisions ten days prior to the next scheduled meeting, so this can be evaluated. You should be ready to justify to the board which recommendations cannot be incorporated and why. So, uh, subsequently, there was an email from Mr. Shea to my office saying, uh, he was at ten twenty-eight that morning, that he was prepared to move forward with the matter, uh, tonight. I then sent an email back to Mr. Vogt saying, can you clarify this for me? You said there was no meeting. Mr. Shea says he's prepared to go forward, uh, what's, what's going on. Mr. Vogt responds at eleven oh six, guys, there is, in bold print, that lies, there is no liquid planning board meeting tonight. FYI, next meeting eight-three, this application not scheduled, underlined, followed by a seventeen twenty-one meeting, brand agenda to be determined. And then he puts the website for your, uh, liquids agenda, people go online. So we did that, of course, and there's nothing there about tonight's meeting. I think that's what Mr. Vogt was saying. There's nothing scheduled. Uh, and then he said, please contact Ali Morris tomorrow if you have any questions. Uh, after that, Mr. Shea wrote another email saying he was prepared to go forward, don't go into it all. I wrote another one simply saying, look, we're relying on what Mr. Vogt's saying. That's, that's really town, you know? And then I didn't hear anything. And about one forty, I wrote an email saying, the last word I have is the second email from Mr. Vogt, saying there's no meeting. I'm going to release my engineer, you know, as far as we're concerned, there's no meeting tonight. Uh, subsequently, uh, Mr. Shea sent another email to Mr. Vogt. Mr. Vogt then sent an email to Mr. Jackson saying, can Mr. Jackson confirm? So this is now at three oh eight. Mr. Jackson then states, there's a meeting tonight, in a meeting. Well, since then, I've tried to reach Mr. Dean, four times by phone, three times by email. He just, I think, decided he was off today. So I don't have Mr. Dean. Originally, we asked him to adjourn because my client, Rabbi Tendel, is out of state, uh, in New York, and he's doing away. So that's how we got here tonight. So, you know, I have to object, we have my client, to any proceeding moving forward without the ability to have my witnesses. We didn't create this. We didn't ask for it. The meeting on March third, by the way, they were supposed to file revised plans in two weeks. They never came in until long after that, but they did file the plans. The applicant did not want to accept a remote meeting. This was carried here, not by us. The applicant wanted to have an immediate meeting. Okay, that wasn't on us. Subsequently, there was a meeting, we were carried from, eight on the list or something. We weren't going to get reached. That's when we started to have some separate discussions, uh, about, with our traffic engineer, Mr. Dean, providing information, which will be in the record later tonight. And we got to the last hearing, as you recall, uh, I said, well, there's no new plans filed, even though we made some headway, you should have during that meeting, get the plans filed. But you voted to go ahead. I had a personal leg in that night myself, but anyway, we went ahead, but we didn't get reached anywhere because of the agenda. And was... And it was carried to August 17th, until I got a call a week, 10 days later, saying, "What about a special meeting tonight?" And that's when I advised, Robyn Templer was not available, was told that the board wanted to proceed anyway, and we were prepared to proceed, and then you see what happened today.
All right, Mr. Hirsch.
That's why I would object to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hirsch and Chairman, I would report, I'd just like to add a couple of more items to Mr. Hirsch's.
One more?
No, not, some more information that I think is important. And to begin with, you know, I, Mr. Hirsch, I admire your style. I admire your temperament and your effectiveness in conveying your position, and I wish I had that kind of skill set. But I think the record should include that this matter is old and it hasn't been, gentlemen... gentlemen?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to get this into the record, and you're both speaking in front of that microphone. Okay, can you just, both, please, give me a moment. Thank you. The, this matter goes back to 2020. It has been adjourned on numerous occasions. The Planning Board has an obligation to hear cases in a timely manner, and if we don't, the applicant can claim a default approval, which nobody wants. And I admire the efforts of our chairman, Mr. Herschel, in moving heaven and earth to try to get various meetings to make this matter go forward. He and I have been on the phone, if I said it dozen times, it's probably two dozen times, to try to get this scheduled for tonight. We, you know, we looked at the calendar, the Planning Board in Lakewood, which is the state of New Jersey's, I think fastest-growing municipality. We have a lot of development here. We have a lot of things to manage. Mr. Herschel was confronted with the idea that I believe there are three of our members who have a conflict of interest in this, including Mr. Sable, who previously voted on it. Mr. Herschel, okay, he doesn't have the, hold on. I'll give it a moment for him to come back. Yeah, well, he should hear this information as well, just wait for him. So we'll just take a moment. Thank you, Mr. Renner. One, so we tried very hard to get a date that everybody could, you know, could agree to, but one of the other complications is, in order to get a quorum, one of our members, Mr. Quarfield, passed away, and that has made things extremely difficult for everybody. We all mourn his loss, and that, he was one of the members that Mr. Herschel had cobbled together to try to get a meeting. We've been meeting every week this summer, just about, to the credit of the board members to try to move these cases. One of the further complications with what Mr. Vogt and I, we have had a disconnect on this unfortunately, is that Ally Morris, our board secretary, is on vacation with her family, and I determined, I just did not want to call her while she was on a well-earned vacation with her family to try to manage all this. So that's why Mr. Vogt and I had differences on whether the matter was going to proceed. Mr. Hirsch, you will agree at all times, I told you that we were working to go forward with this meeting, and you had been communicating with me. Mr. Shea published a notice. The notice went out, and our Open Public Meetings Act went out. I understand the frustration you must feel. I understand the, you know, the information that you put in, and I think at the right time, the board will make a determination. I also have a feeling that it's unlikely that we will reach a final vote tonight regardless because Committee Man Akerman is not eligible to vote, and I agree with you. I think five members have to be eligible to vote. I don't think you could just make them the quorum and then use the four members, unless someone could show me a blow to the contrary of Mr. Shea. I think it has to work.
My only point with that, Mr. Jackson, is that the application was not presented last time, rather, as a report. The application basically is a new application.
Well, then, that's a different issue. It was a bifurcated issue. Five members here tonight can actively... That's a different issue. The record's been made on that, and we'll confront that when we get to it. So, you know, I understand the circumstances. I just want to put that additional information in the record, and my recommendation is that we proceed with the merits of the application. Let Mr. Shea and his team lay it out, and then we'll take it from there. Let's hear what this application, what it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Do you still wish to finish it right now?
Yeah. I only objected to the statement that was a bifurcated application. It was one application. This is the same application. It's the same application, not bifurcated.
Yes, and those are just my semantics, and we, I fully understand what you are arguing.
It was a procedural bifurcation.
Or you and Mr. Hirsch agree to disagree, let's put it that way. And I agree to referee. So let's go on from there.
Through the chair.
And just so the record is clear, you know, the applicant received word that this hearing was going to be scheduled for tonight, July 27th. I spoke to Mr. Jackson a number of times about it, spoke to Ms. Morris a number of times. We got our notices out in time, publication, notice of all adjacent property owners. I even received an email from Mr. Hirsch indicating that his client received a copy of the notice. So all the procedural aspects were taken care of. This was not something that was just rushed, willing, and willing in the last four or five days. This was something that was taken, took place, and was evidently scheduled weeks ago. Otherwise, it would not have implicated by you and the witnesses. Through the chair.
Mr. Jackson, is there any way that you can think of that both counsel would agree to, that we could hear what we need to hear, vote on this with the five members present here tonight, that would be unquestionable? Because my recollection of the last time is we spent two hours arguing over essentially procedural matters. We've been here for an hour. No disrespect, you guys did your job, but we got called here. We have been meeting just about every week this summer. So we are happy to hear the substance of these matters, but I almost spent another two hours talking procedure. Is there any way, I don't want to comment on that, is there any way that we can move forward substantively, hear what we need to hear, and vote? What is that?
There is, however. I think you have to weigh and analyze the chemistry and the circumstances and the equities of Mr. Hirsch's belief that they weren't going forward, not calling his expert, having his client on vacation, et cetera. I think that all has to be weighed in the mix at the moment of truth. You might look at this and say, "This is the world's easiest application. It's easy to make this decision now." And I don't even, you know, and...
But what we need to...
Or you might say, "It's the worst application," you know, no matter what.
I understand what we need, what we need to do, that if we decide to act, we can act tonight.
I think, I think we have to wait and see how it unfolds and make that determination in the context of what the merits of the case are. And my thinking is, my recommendation is, I think, Mr. Hirsch, you know, raises some good points, but let's, let's address that when we get to it.
What's it Churchill said?
What's that?
Mr. Churchill said, "Democracy is the worst one ever invented in the history of the world, except for all the others."
You know what he said about politics and sausage too, right?
Yes.
So with all that said, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vogt, were you finished with your review letter?
No, Mr. Vogt barely started.
Okay, so Mr. Vogt would agree. Now we can continue if I'm allowed. Uh, he's not on the listening table to vote, so I'm only looking at him. If it was Stern, Sable, Herschel, Renner, Isaacson, yes, Isaacson was... I think if you're going to, so Mr. Isaacson might be able to call in? Committee Man Akerman just said he thinks that's the worst idea ever. Want to voice well, okay, so Committee Man Akerman, you're lucky we can't get a hold of Mr. Isaacson. So can we, can we just listen to Mr. Vogt's review?
Chairman, would you like me to continue?
Yes, please.
All right. I'm reading from our June 23, 2020 review. I'm going to, not reiterative, I'm going to start some of the highlights, beginning at the bottom of page two on your zoning. We've indicated that there are several pre-existing conditions that are various conditions which have to be reaffirmed. One was minimum side door setback for existing trailers to remain. There was an existing accessory side door setback, which had to be reaffirmed per part of Zone 3. Continuing on, the application requires perimeter buffer relief from the board, as well as relief for parking within the buffers. We had indicated originally that design waivers were necessary, including shade tree, utility shade trees, they did add easements to the plans. Therefore, based on the April 2020 plans, design waivers are only required for shade trees and landscaping. Design waiver may be required depending upon the use of the facility in regard to a bus loading and unloading area. Now, continuing on your review comments, this is something that I think is important. There was discussion between the two attorneys relative to the first hearing and what was on the plans. The April 2020 plans and resubmission did include what we asked from the applicants' engineer at the first hearing, specifically a statement of operations as to how the school functioned. That is referenced in Comment 1 in our June 23 review. Per the statement of operations, it was stated that 148 students are proposed into the youth facility, that the students...
By wait, that's a mistake. That's for the, was the entire school. That should be 70, so it's...
I'm sorry, should I hear you?
It should be 78 students. That was a mistake in that...
78?
78, that's right.
Thank you.
All right, so it would be 78 students proposed. The students are, will be dropped off and picked up by car. Is that correct?
Everything else is correct.
Okay, all right. I'll just read through then. Statement C, the parents will pull into the lot through the driveway from Sixth Street, and they exit through the back of the lot on Seventh Street. Eight staffers are proposed, but only two will park in the parking lot, and no buses are proposed. Now, tying into the issues of circulation, the preceding comments in our letter, Comments 2 and 3 on the review. Comment number two was testimony was to be provided from the applicants' professionals as to the feasibility of the proposed use of the existing access drive within Township Lot 15, which would allow traffic to exit on the Seventh Street. Is the drive sufficient to carry traffic? If so, would improvements are necessary, and what is the addition of the drive? Comment three was, if board approval is granted, Lakewood Township approval for use of this access drive should be a condition of approval. If approved, necessary improvements to this access drive and the intersection with Seventh Avenue should be conditions of board approval. We have subsequent comments that are not circulation in nature. Some would deal with the added parking lot, collection of waste, architectural plans, access driveway to access the parking area. Many of these typical comments, I suspect Mr. Lyons would give comment on if given the opportunity. Continuing on to page 5 of our review, we indicated board approval is granted does not relieve the applicant of his responsibility to obtain all necessary outside agency approvals, included but not limited to Lakewood Township, Ocean County, Ocean County Health approvals for lung septic, several other significant comments, and statement factor 3 or 2 drainage. And that is the gist of our June 23.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Churchill. I have actually one witness, and I have the operator who may or may not testify to the role of whether there's any question, you were in the operating operation. So again, just so it's clear, the, the school, preschool at this point in time is up and running to the CO, and was built as a bay in 2018. So it's been operated for quite a number of years at this particular site. The, as a result of some litigation that, that defending between the respective parties, an application was decided to be submitted to the board, again, for a site plan exemption based upon the statute, based by ordinance, and here we are. The, yeah, but in what board we are, we're fully aware that the application involves a current, existing use, an existing preschool, operated with currently 52 students, it's licensed for about 79 at this point, but the facility is up and running and has been running very successfully over the past number of years, with absolutely no incidences whatsoever. I have Mr. Lyons here in...
Mr. Shea, if I may ask, we have the plans right there. Would you mind moving those plans a little, you know, right up front, center in front of the board, and so everyone can see them, and just walk us through the elements as the attorney for the applicant, just give us like a little bit of an opening statement?
I think we have the...
They have it in front of us, but I would rather have Mr. Lyons do that very quickly. He has to... We'd best be able to go through, if you want to go through the history, which I'll be if necessary, I think we can go through what the presentation is tonight, addressed specifically to Mr. Vogt's letter, and I think the board will get a break of overview.
But I'd just like to know what, just from the beginning, what are the buildings that are shown there, what's proposed, what's the circulation, what are the basic elements of it?
Honestly, we'd rather have a...
All right, so why don't we put Mr. Lyons under oath? Mr. Lyons, you swear from testimony before the court as a truth, the whole truth, and that's the truth.
Mr. Shea, excuse me if I could just question, is he testifying on the filed set of plans that are revised for April 23rd, or is he testifying to the new concept that was dropped off tonight?
These are the existing plans.
The April 23rd.
These are existing plans or not? The fifth one's 4/32. This one is. So it's the same thing with that one?
That's right.
Okay.
I have to get you right by the microphone.
Should be sheet four.
So, Mr. Lyons, the board recognized you as an expert, Mr. Johnson, and very kind. So, Mr. Lyons, this, and I don't need to take over your application, but just show us what this plan is, what buildings are there, what we propose to do, just in simple, straightforward, and then what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Mr. Hirsch to tell us what their issues are, what their objections are, so that we can then go to their presentation.
We'll research. I think that the applicant has the opportunity.
I, I...
Presenting the application.
And you will.
On the record.
You will, so let me finish what I was going to say. I just want to get a little overview, and then I want to know what Mr. Hirsch's fundamental issues are, and then you can take over like you were going to start.
I think that we're going to be addressing some of the issues that Mr. Hirsch has, through Mr. Lyons at this point.
Yeah, I understand the board. Mr. Chairman, do you want to hear, do you want to know the context at the beginning? That's what I suggest. Is the board okay with that, or are you... I think it'll help you understand when they go through. Just give us a little overview.
Are you on page four, Mr. Lyons?
I was just going to briefly describe what the site is there.
Is that page four, or a little?
It's here, Site Plan Sheet 4, correct, Len? Oh, Sheet 4, yes.
Okay, there's more to say.
I just want to make sure you're not getting us in trouble. Please proceed.
So we basically have an L-shaped piece of property with frontage on Sixth Street and Madison Avenue. The, there's an existing house, a three-story house, which is going to be used as Dean's residence and some offices. and some offices. And then on the other part of the L, which goes out to Madison Avenue, there are two modular classroom buildings that, as we indicated, have been there since 2018, and there is a basery garage at the rear of, I guess it's existing lot 11, but behind the existing house that will also remain. What we're proposing is a driveway that will enter on Sixth Street, come into a parking lot that has six parking spaces and a student drop-off area, where the drop-off students and teachers will take their children into the school. And then they'll exit out a 25-foot-wide township lot, which is going to use as access for a while. It goes all the way out to Seventh Street. There's been, you have handicap parking and then five additional spaces. So we're picking up an additional, what was it, 78 students? Was that the number? Seventy-eight students?
It's up to 78 students.
And...
Seventy-eight currently, so you have 58 something?
Apparently 52 students.
So they go up 20 something?
So this will be 26 additional students, and this will involve new construction on the building?
The maximum amount of students will be 79 if they have the license.
Okay.
They currently have 52 students attending the school.
And Mr. Lyons, do you have an aerial or a tax map or something that can show what is around the facilities of the board?
I'm sorry, I can't hear something. How many more students might you add?
The total of 78 students, 79 students that are licensed, so there are a total of 52 students currently at the school.
Thank you.
Does that mean...
Seventy-nine students is max.
That's right.
And, okay, Mr. Lyons, what exhibit are you showing us now? Is that part of the submission? I didn't, we didn't number, but this would be exhibit number four. Eighty-four. And then...
Eighteen students.
And what is that? This is a site plan overlay on Google Earth map. All right, and the board has that, I see. This is in the board's... So this just gives the context of the relationship of the property to the neighborhood? Correct. And I'll go basically around counterclockwise. We'll start over at quarter six to Madison. There is a, it's a four-unit townhouse building that fronts on Sixth Street. Then along Madison, there are the two trailers that are modulars that we're talking about. Then there are, going around toward Seventh, but still on Madison, you have two duplex buildings, and then there is a single-family home on Seventh. There's a drive, the drive that I talked about is the township lot, is between the first house, and then there are two apartment buildings where the air traffic pattern is most of the cars come in on Seventh and then go out through the township lot. Then there's generally single-family homes that front on Morris Avenue. Then there's two more single-family homes, three, the center of the building, on Sixth Street, and then we get to the last, the last building, which is the house that will be used for the graphics. All right, thank you. So is that a fair, you know, overview of what the application is?
Yes.
Now, just like, it would be like an opening statement, so I'd like Mr. Hirsch, if you could come forward, please, and just by way of a brief opening comment, what are the issues and the objections that your client has to the application? You know, why is this a contested application?
Thank you. The concern of my client from the outset has been the pedestrian and traffic safety of the site. The, his personal views of the site, and Mr. Dean also, which is, have students crossing Sixth Avenue at different areas. There's no walkway. Previously, there was no crossing guard, although one of the issues we've asked for, I believe there is a crossing guard currently, which is itself. That cars would be pulling in Sixth, drop-off students, parents, sometimes baby carriages what have you, are walking into that same driveway, but the parents are then turning around and coming out of Sixth Avenue. So it was, we believe, an extremely dangerous situation and in poor design. You've got to keep in mind, we got going back to the third hearing, this was the, that any site plan, no variances were branded, any existing variances, they're not pre-existing variances, they were never branded. They were just given permission to put up these, what was supposed to be temporary trailers for school. So there was never any approvals for any, other than the architectural, the building department did approve.
Well, that said, just...
So therefore, we retain Mr. Dean, who's known a traffic expert, simply with the instructions, tell us what is the safety sign. There was no agenda, no nothing. He has a report, I don't know if you all have it, if I have copies, which was liable to work, but if you don't have it, I have it here tonight, with showing on a plan to Mr. Sheng, his engineer, these are the changes we like, widening the sidewalks so kids can walk and not be in the driveway, handicap ramp, et cetera, et cetera, you know, present them later, but that is the concept, all dealing, all of them, safety. We have nothing, no axes to grind here, we weren't gaining anything.
So...
This is all about the site.
If those safety concerns were or could be addressed, would your client still have an objection to this application?
No, if all Mr. Dean's recommendation for except any, we have no objection.
So just to skip ahead a little, I know there was a plan circulated that we talked about at the outset of the meeting that Mr. Vog hasn't had a chance to look at yet.
We had seen Mr. Dean's plans previously.
Have you seen the red line, I'll call it the pending red line revisions that Mr. Sheng has brought with him tonight?
I don't believe so.
You haven't seen them at all?
I was handed a copy of the plans.
I do. All right, so I'm asking, Mr. Hirsch, please, Mr. Hirsch, have you had a chance to look at them and go over them with your engineer, more importantly, with your client?
No.
Okay, so that they may be satisfactory, they may not be?
There was, there was one plan, trying to go back to my brain, that Mr. Lyons, I believe, he gave me some attention of plans, Dean, that some changes they would agree to, and Mr. Dean, I believe, responded that, well, that was a good start, but you didn't, what about A, B, C, and D that you didn't respond to? More to that effect. And we never, that's where it condensed.
All right, so that's where we're at? All right, thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add as far as what the objections?
Do you want to add the...
Yeah.
The Dean's plan?
If you can put that right here, I'll hand it out to the board.
Mr. Sheng, put this case on the mic.
Okay, then we'll hand it out at the right time. So you want to hold on to it because someone will lose it or forget.
I want to raise the board up.
Yes.
That's not the application's issue.
Of course. Mr. Hirsch, well, Mr. Sheng, I appreciate your indulgence. I hope that that exercise will be helpful to the board.
And just so it's clear, we attempted during this process to sit down and come up with a resolution, and then we were told, oh, no, we want to see the plan in front. So that'll be it, the reason why we didn't come before the board with an amended plan, although the board really had had an opportunity to see some of these changes that would be recommended, because we're not going to have a plan resubmitted with all, and then have, excuse me, and then have an objector come in and say, well, we want, we want some more things, we want some other items.
Right now, we're at the stage where you're presenting a case, and the board's going to react to that, so let's get to the case here.
That's what I attempted to do, so Mr. Hirsch came up here with Mr. Hirsch. So, I think Mr. Lyons was presenting the application, perhaps we have, Mr. Lyons gets some views of the site.
Let's go through all of it.
Okay.
So, is there any variances?
So as far as variances, we have three or four. I don't want to hold in this closely, so I'll maybe add that. I've got to stop this track.
He's starting this track.
He is. He still is. The, there's a variance for minimum side yard setback of 11.61 feet, where 12 feet the building is required. That is on the south side of the modular unit, and then there's a background that's necessary, so that's the south side. On the north side, there's 16.13 feet, so the buildings are evenly spaced.
So, Mr. Lyons, the variance request is actually for 0.4 feet, is that correct? What should it be?
I'm sorry, yes, I was thinking 16 was required. 12 is required, and we have 11.61 feet, so we're 0.39 feet from the mid-quarter.
And the other one is performing for 15?
And the other side is conforming. So, the only way to make this conforming, and we could, is to pick up the modular units and move them over, but they've been in this location, they're on foundations, there's a wooden four-walk type walkway between the buildings, so for the sake of...
We were talking 4.8 inches.
Right. To move the buildings and go through all that, so I think the detriment, or the benefits of leaving them where they are, that way they're technically having to do, I think, they can't get either. And second is an existing side yard setback for, and it says, actually, letter, but it is for this existing garage, which is probably 50, 60 years, which is preview off the property line.
Under the name.
Excuse me?
Under the name.
Under the name, thank you. Where seven is required.
Where's the three feet? That's not, that's being used for school.
Really nothing to do with this.
With this application.
Right. It's just existing, and it adds up to a driveway for those apartments in the rear. So it's not anybody, you know, anybody in the backyard, anything like that.
There's no students going there, none of this?
No students, it's used for storage.
Just storage, yeah, I don't really care about it.
We're requesting perimeter buffer, where 20 feet is required, and we're approximately 12 and a half feet from the perimeter. If we did plan a perimeter buffer around the trailers, we're using up space where children can go outside and play during the daytime, so we would request that, that waiver. And these, again, they've been there for quite a while, so it's an existing condition. We do require a designer of shade trees and landscaping. As you can see, it's difficult, if you can see from the aerials, there are existing trees along Sixth Street where, that are suitable, the shade trees, we would request a waiver on Madison Avenue, and that is on the west side of the property, which also, that's the main play area for the children outside. So we would request that waiver from the, from the shade trees. And that's basically the variances, the way...
Is fence also provided on the...
There is, there is fencing around the, around the playground there. And there's fence, six foot, where you provide fence along Madison Avenue, way to the sixth foot, so that's, so there is protection between the playground and Madison Avenue.
Number seven, Mr. Vog's report is...
Mr. Lyons, is there anything changing on this site plan? Or everything is existing, the trails are existing?
Well, we're, we aren't taking the driveway of the parking lot.
No, but buildings.
Yeah, all the buildings that are existing, what is...
Not the same.
You have today, those ones that are there, the same buildings that are there.
Only these you can sell, you know, improving the driveways, the sidewalks, whatever, make the same up.
And...
And number seven, just to be clear, there's no buses, there's no buses being used in the drop truck, is that right?
Number seven was that we should provide a bus area, because buses were being proposed, there is no, no bus to school students. Again, we're going to review comments. Number one, we've been through the rest of the statement of operation. Number two is regarding the township lot, which is lot number 15, defined for the north of the property, that we're going to be using as an access driveway, that's currently an access driveway for the apartments, so the apartments have been using that driveway for years, we're just going to be adding the access cars.
It doesn't belong to the apartments?
It does not belong to the apartments. It is an individual model by the township, 25 feet wide between existing buildings. Excuse me, Chairman, has any application or request been formally made to the township in terms of the use of the lot?
Again, that lot has been used for, we can predict, probably for over 60 years. So I saw one of your comments, and it said, to have it goes to the township, I'm sure that we have the ability of using it, but...
So you would seek that if the board approved this application?
If the board approves it, we'd have to reaffirm with the township that we can utilize it as well. I would think that the apartments would have to reaffirm it too, because the apartments have been utilizing that access since the, since the application, since that was approved.
Have you had any discussions with the township to see if they would make it more formal?
We have not, we've been waiting for this application.
Because the sense of making the use more intense, right now you already have the apartment people coming from their, their apartment lot around the south side of our building to the left. Now your people are going to be merging at the same time, correct?
Yeah, Jennifer?
Yeah.
I don't know the Alkis.
So I don't know if it's the township, but you're intensifying the use, and I'm not objecting, I'm just asking the question, who would determine whether your intensification of the use of that township accessway is okay? Somebody wanted to make an extreme absurd example, if somebody wanted to run a super highway through there, okay, it is not meant for that.
That's traffic and safety.
I don't know that traffic and safety...
The Thomas is signed over.
I think the town, if they want signage, reserve it by side.
I don't know, I'm not telling you what to do, but you're intensifying the use of this township-owned accessway.
Correct.
So somebody needs to determine, and it ain't us, I don't think.
I would, I would believe that if this is approved, we would submit a letter to the township committee, you know, requesting that we can allow them to continue, we can intensify the use.
Would it traffic and safety though? I think both in terms of...
No, we have to go through the township committee first. They would send it to traffic and safety.
You be okay with this?
Yes.
Again, it's our position, and that's, with a whole bunch of legal arguments that would apply, that if the township, like, that at least said, no, you're not allowed to use it, well, there's prescriptive easements that have been in place for many, many years utilizing that.
But not in this, not in this direction.
You go from this direction, yes. Yeah, without that.
So, as you're correctly, that direction, that direction has been taken place for the past few years.
Oh, it is, it's scary.
Yeah, I... Something extra that they got, ready to be used. But I think, I think we're talking apples and oranges, though. This is part of their site plan, and it's a substantial portion of how their site circulates and how it works. It may be a municipal roadway, but they have to show that there's a right, not a municipal roadway, it might be owned by the municipality, there's not a right way.
It's a trouble.
But nevertheless, they have to have permission to use that of some sort as part of their site number.
How does site number?
The township.
Does get it.
I think that that should be a condition of approval then.
You be okay with it?
And that's what Terry's question was. Well, they haven't asked, and they're saying, well, it's been used that way for many years. That's a big difference, though, than having a, you know, an actual right to use it.
That's a, that's a, like, then we would want to take up the township, as a fight would be a request of the township, detachment, so if, no, you're not allowed to use it, our alternative would be, okay, and everybody else should stop using it as well.
But that would...
We'd have to redesign the plant that the access come out to Sixth, right? That's really what it was.
That would do violence to the site plan, I think that's Mr. Vog's point, was to just... So, and my recommendation at the time would be that that would be a condition of approval, that they get confirmation from the committee that that can continue to be used indefinitely.
We're just trying to tie it a little bit.
Okay, please continue, Mr. Lyons. Okay. Next comment four is about ADA access. The modulars are going to be ADA accessible, we have a van on the west end of one building, and we require that one handicap space, which has the... and we require that one handicap space, which has the ideal for handicap accessibility. The existing building is not handicap accessible. Anytime that if they had a meeting or parents meeting or something that required, you know, access for a handicapped person, they'd always have that in the other building. We don't need to make the existing building handicap accessible. Number five, of course, will continue to plant garbage. We're not proposing any, number six is regarding the existing building, we're not proposing any architectural changes to the building. Request the way that those plans.
That's, that's three-story building.
That is a three-story dwelling. Number seven is regarding the driveway, we are going to make this driveway a little bit wider, that's what we requested, and then we have the plan. And the rest of the group just, either we address them, or they're just some minor comments and things that.
Excuse me Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Lines, do you have any objections with any of the recommendations in our letter?
No.
Thank you.
Signage, access easements, we're doing.
Mr. Lines, could you just show us the circulation, how people are coming in, moving on?
Okay, so, again, people will drive in from Sixth Street through, through this driveway between the existing parking building, or by the townhouse building, and the three-story driveway residence.
It's one-way going in, right?
One-way coming in. They'll then either fall over into the drop walk if they're, you know, some of the children are being escorted from there to the building, where if they need, there are five regular parking spaces and one handicap space.
How wide is the area with the drop off?
The drop off's nine feet wide by forty-five feet long.
And the driveway afterwards?
And the driveway.
Is twenty-five feet?
Uh, yes.
So you have twenty-five plus nine?
We actually, I, oh no, we have twenty, I'm sorry, we have twenty-eight feet between the drop off and the parking spaces. Then you get to where the access is at the back, and that's, that's fifteen feet wide opening in the middle, that goes to the township block.
And to be clear, that is being used now, or you're proposing that it be?
Yeah, it is being used.
And the only thing you're changing is your paving gravel?
We're, we're paving our lot and putting curb, putting a compressed curb across to differentiate where it starts, but the existing township piece of property is paved and...
So the traffic pattern will be changed increasingly?
No, just be as, as Mr. Boz pointed out, it'll increase in intensity, we're going from fifty-two students to seventy-eight, but you're increasing it by fifty percent, so fifty percent.
Glenn, the township driveway is exactly the fuel driveway for your company, most traded?
No, it, it's sort of offset. You can see this darker black line, there's darker property lines, which goes from the margin to the line. It, it's sort of lined up with that, so that, so this drop off area as we proposed is to the west side. So this'll, no, we'll have to make a, make a small, very small, a small.
It's nothing to cost us.
Yes, we've checked all the turn movements, people could get through with no problems, handles cars, without any problems.
A van also?
Yeah.
Thank you. The buses, you said there's no buses?
There's no buses.
So the biggest thing would be the traffic management?
Correct.
And that you feel would make it okay?
That's, yes, maybe, it'll be able to get through in the driveway and work the way, no, I mean, the turn may be a little bit bigger, you know, than a car, but it'll still be able to get through.
The elevation of the driveway is all the same, the cars all the way down?
It, it actually drops off towards the north. So it comes in from the front, trying to see about one oh three, the middle of the site is about one oh one, and the, at the north of the property line is about ninety feet. So the whole property slopes toward, from six foot seven, six is sort of the high point of the town.
Any reason for garbage trucks or maintenance vehicles to come through that area?
No, no, currently garbage has what happened to occur, we're, we continue that, the garbage has picked up the curb by the road.
And now most of it's.
Yes.
Excuse me Chairman, if I can reiterate our comment three, which the applicant has agreed to, if board approval is granted, legal township approval for use of this access drive should be a condition of approval. If approved, necessary improvements to this access drive and the intersection of Seventh Avenue should be conditions of the board approval. The applicant's agreed to that.
That's right.
You will pave the whole thing with intention?
With, with, with intention of the township, yeah.
The pavement's in, in good condition, but if then, if some repairs hadn't been made, or township builds the driveway, or then the north again has to be wide to improve, to replace, we, I don't have intention of it.
Our phrase is necessary improvements to be determined by legal township.
You can't be wiping buildings there, it's twenty-five feet right now, you said, no?
Right, probably. It may be a little bit narrower at the, at the, at the street. I'm just saying, if they feel it needs to be widened to accommodate cars a little better, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Now, is there water runoff in that area when it rains?
Um, it's.
Is it proper drainage, is it goes all the way to Seventh, where does it go?
It mainly goes, well, we're providing stormwater recharge to the parking lot, but it basically goes sort of in a northeast direction from the site between the shelves and the mask. It really doesn't, it slopes more towards Route Nine and Madison Avenue, then it slopes towards the south.
Does it damage the foundation of the modulars at all?
No, they didn't.
Is there any thought of moving the modulars at some point independent of these plans, or replacing them, or putting a permanent structure there instead?
I don't have any thought.
No, I'm just wondering about their plans, I'm just asking what they're thinking. Because if we asked you to move it, why would we bother to move it if they're, if they're keeping it permanently, that's, that's the thought.
That's our intention, keep it permanent.
Right.
Did you hear Mr. Hirsch's statement about the desk hands walking in, presumably sprawlers from Sixth Street, drop off the kid, let's come back down?
This might, this might be a good segue if we could, and it might make sense for the board. We have Mr. Dean's report, and I, I think it'd be worthwhile if the board members have copies of their report. We can show what the changes that we felt were reasonable. On the revised, revised set of plans, and we all understand is not part of the application part of Mr. Boz's report, but Mr. Lines was kind enough to refer a plan that indicates what some of those changes may be.
Would you like to hear those, Mr. Dean's, from the T O?
That's, that's right.
Excuse me Chairman, I don't have a copy of Mr. Dean's report, is that it John?
Sure.
Thank you.
The writer replied on hanging out a report, June tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the rabbi, Joel Penler, from Gary Dean.
Okay, you have to walk with that, yes.
Yeah.
Can you pull this up?
We'll go on a, a through.
I think it's a thought.
A through. Well, Mr. Shay is presenting it, and he's going to address it, so it's from the objectors' expert, but Mr. Shay is introducing it, wants to respond to it. Mr. Hirsch was kind enough to provide a copy.
Mr. Hirsch, you okay with it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Shay, you've seen us.
If I could skip to page two of the report where it's, it starts getting a little powerless at both points, I'm going to ask Mr. Lines to go down each of those bullet points and indicate how he addressed the, those recommendations.
Who's making all the notes on the site?
There's most.
Is that, is that yours, or is? No, there's most on the site, yeah. It doesn't work very well.
I apologize, my secretary taught me to take a pressure before copying one of the lines.
There's nothing.
Mr. Shay, if, if you want, we can read out this.
There's nothing of any.
We can read out the paragraphs. We can read out the paragraphs and have Mr. Lines identify.
I'd like to show on the plan what Mr. Dean wants, and that you agree with it. Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lines, Shay's going to read through this, Mr. Lines will show what they agree with.
Yes, I think that's, makes sense. And, and I just checked with Mr. Ackerman, please, one at a time, try to speak right into the microphone. All right? So, everything through the chair, so, Mr. Shay, please proceed.
On page, referring to page two of, again, of Mr. Dean's report, first bullet point states construction of a designated sidewalk along the easterly edge of the driveway, leaving a one-foot separation to the adjacent property, again, quotes, for construction purposes to accommodate pedestrians, to maintain a twelve-foot lane with the curb line along the westerly side of the driveway, in parentheses, closest to the existing house, close parentheses, should be shifted at least one foot.
One second, Mr. Lines, please show us, explain it in simple language.
Okay. Mr. Dean was requesting a sidewalk basically along this property line to connect to this handicap striped ADA access. Count that as.
Is there a sidewalk that he wants to wipe, or there's, he wants to add a sidewalk? It doesn't exist now?
That's not.
Thank you.
This concern, as far as I interpret it, is that parents are walking in the drive, in the paved area, in the driveway, while there are also cars. Okay.
That's a good point.
Yes, the, the area he was recommending use has two corners and a, and a panel for electricity for the modules. So we would have to move that and relay all that cable to be able to fit the sidewalk.
Could you put it on the other side?
So what I posed is we put the four-foot sidewalk on the opposite side, which we request side, to come up.
And then you cross?
So we're even with the handicap.
And how do you cross?
Requested for plus curving and a crosswalk. You put it across what, lets everybody know where the people, you know, parents and children will be crossing.
Your concern isn't the different?
The different, yes.
The other way is safer, we must cross the crosswalk, and the other option is to mess it.
Okay.
So we incorporated that change on the, on the revised plan that's marked, that marked as eighty-three.
That's the one we said, you have to change what this.
Okay, now, the next. Now, the second point, you were pointing out that to put in the sidewalk, we would have to move the refuse containers, which were stored along the property line. What we've done is, we have, and he, he was recommending it be moved out in front of the site between the sidewalk and curb on Sixth. I didn't think that was a very good place to store the containers as, that's not a patch of place. So we have proposed a tab on the side of the three-story building where the refuse and cycle containers will be stored during the week, and then we rolled out the curb on collection day, and then rolled back.
So we cross the rear of the house on the side?
Yeah.
On the right side?
Basically, even with that gate, that handicap cross, like even the cross.
With this, then the house goes in a little?
Yes.
Okay.
The third one is, there's a, there's a small piece of curb out by the street, about two feet long, that we recommended that we take out and then basically fill in that, that spot between our concrete apron and neighbor's concrete apron, because.
Sorry, who's starting that?
It's a little level.
Okay, so the fish, fix up the whole sidewalk?
We'll fix up that, yes.
Okay. He says she moved it, is there a utility post or something?
Uh, yeah. I looked at the utility holes, and there's all types of equipment up there, some type of internet or cable TV or whatever, and there's two of them side by side, and they're perfect, they're very expensive, so we, I designed around the poles so they can stay where they are.
The sidewalk would be contiguous around, around the pole?
The sidewalk currently goes behind the poles, I, I don't.
So why did he want you to move?
I guess that, he said to better accommodate turning movements, but poles are on the left side of the driveway, they're pulling into the driveway from, they're coming from the wet, you know, in eastbound direction, they're, they're crossing, you know, Sixth, they're crossing the noncoming lane, so they're really not in the wet. I mean, you're, you're already made the corner before the poles are. If they were on the other side, I could see where they may be within the turning radius of the park, but they're on the side where they are, they're not.
So your testimony that even a van could make the full turn without having a problem with vault?
Because a van or a car is coming from the other side, they've got sixteen feet of roadway to make.
Okay, please continue.
The, okay, the next one is handicap ramp, he provided the door at the end, that's just word towards what we've already done. We don't need the, the, okay. I provided a handicap, that's easy to do. Oh, this comment was that we should have a minimum of fifteen feet between the, the corner of the curving and the, and the top one there. We've run, we've used the car templates to get through, and it really is, is not necessary. And we said, and if we moved it, we ended up really just making it smaller.
How much do you have right now? You're saying fifty feet, how much you want?
Uh, right now, the way it lines up, it's about, it's about twelve feet. And one of his other comments was to move this, this unloading area over a little more. And then we do, we move, we move the, move the curving, curving three feet away from the garage, reduce the width of the, of the loading area. I think all those things, it's just personal preference, I, I don't think they're necessary. The only way we had to design it originally is that it works better.
I, I don't want you, the loading area, I think, I want you to make it smaller, on the actual, the lot, because we can off.
Correct, so, I, I didn't agree with this recommendation there. The third, or the, on the, on the next page, the first one, he's talking about how much your grading is going to be back in this corner, and, and we, we showed the grading in good sense. Admitted to the exit, of course, implemented parking signs along the exit Seventh Street. We put, I already showed some one-way, exit only signs, we put no parking, I think there's some more parking signs already, we can put more there, signage, you know, a few extra traffic signs.
It's already been used as an exit, ex, egress way?
Yes, but.
For the existing apartment complex?
But it is a few signs.
Signs are cheap.
Do not enter sign, next one's do not enter sign, I did propose that on the back. We put up a no-Three Street sign around to the Title Thirty-nine, we can submit requests to the township and they forced Title Thirty-nine, but they usually send it back and say that they do not want the police being the parkers, illegal parkers on private property. We have tried that, the board has requested that years ago, the zoning board requested it years ago.
I would say you, you will apply.
I, we're more than happy to send it, yes, yeah. We've been told we pass it up.
Committee of inaccurate views.
Please say something, we'll take that.
One, hold on.
Commitment in Ackerman, we didn't hear that. Can you repeat your comment, please?
The Title Thirty-nine, the camera, the question.
All right, commitment and saying you are.
Yeah, both of the three. That's not.
Yeah, there's a.
He had the, the claim he was given.
Pardon?
And that. Okay. Lastly, which is the next one, last paragraph, the requesting that we put in a raised crosswalk across Sixth Street as part of a traffic calming feature.
What is a raised crosswalk? Raise the whole?
It's like a.
Speed bump?
Yeah, it's like just a wide speed bump in the road that slows people down.
You can't have one on Sixth or Seventh.
This is. Just going through the comments. I don't, I would request that of the township, but, you know, maybe have to approve something like that before we do it.
There's not a degree to go to that?
I don't know. I don't know. I have to leave that up to the parents. I don't know that we're allowed, we're very allowed to.
I said if the township allows, then you can do it?
No, we would not do it. That's, that's almost like something that the township.
So, the other thing you don't know.
Okay.
There's a light right there by Sixth and Madison. I mean, there's, there's traffic that goes through pretty quickly and wouldn't necessarily see a speed bump just past the intersection there. I don't know if that's a wise thing. They can put in lights and flashing things like they want to do for crosswalk or whatever else, but I don't know if a speed bump would be a wise position for that, at that corner.
The flash, but the township also has to agree to it.
May I suggest something, Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm reading the report for the first time, and Glenn, I think you're talking about on page three, he makes a statement to the effect that the most significant safety enhancement is introduction of sidewalk that will allow pedestrians along Sixth Street. That's what you're, you're currently talking about? Or am I looking at something different?
He's talking about the enhancement to safety.
The most significant safety enhancement is of course.
It's there is one on the bottom of page three, there's a crossing with a yellow.
Okay, the crossing guard employed, okay.
We're going to the traffic.
One report that we already talked about, we're putting in sidewalk that is for best safety.
That's what you're trying to.
And the last.
We are.
The raised crosswalk, that people just refer to, no parking signs on Sixth Street, and there's a school license that parks across the street.
What's that about?
That's what the other school.
It works out.
I'll just ask to be clear, going through the whole plan, to be clear, like our attorney to take no sign, or going through the whole report, I think most things you agreed satisfy the opposing attorney. What don't you say if you do these, he's good? What don't you agree? Let's first see what don't you agree. Let's have Mr. Hirsch.
We don't, we don't agree with the raised crosswalk. We don't agree with the.
One second, one second.
It's page three, bottom, bottom section.
You can say this as an example.
Well, I think the best way to describe it would be at the middle of page three, where it says to specialize all of the proposed traffic circulation changes proposed by the alderman's engineer and contained within this memorandum, and we recommend that the planning will also be favorable condition to Title Thirty-nine. We would agree with that, we'd agree to submit that. If the town allows for that, that's fine.
But no, it's a condition.
That could be a condition. Where we go off the rails a little bit is the next remain. Remaining suggested site plan improvements are relatively minor in nature. In generation, we could not believe the request of revision significantly alter the proposal. Again, that's just a statement. And lastly, we'll use the order, lastly, and speaking, the crossing guard employed by the township police department considers may be warranted by providing a raised crosswalk with flashing school crossing warning signs within Sixth Street as part of the traffic calming feature that will better maintain vehicle traffic speeds as well as provide uniform pedestrian crossing guards at the site. There is a crossing guard reprovided by the town.
Can I interrupt you for a moment? That mean there?
That's the one condition you do not want to fulfill.
No, no, we, we, there's a crossing guard that actually is there.
I mean, the raised.
The raised, the raised sidewalk as well as the signage that they're proposing on the township, by the way.
But that's Sixth Street anyways, you don't control that.
That's correct.
We can't agree to something we don't.
And then you're on.
I agree.
Okay. We wanted to go to the township once.
I don't think there's one, there's a sign like that, many stores.
Mr. Shea, anything else in the report of this report?
And also the, what was mentioned before about the, the bus on the other side, that really has nothing to do with this application. It's owned by the school across the street, and it's utilized by them, it's not utilized by this little school.
Which one is that? Which page is that?
That's the last page.
By the end.
There's a parking of a school bus aside from the legal prohibition, also supposedly also significantly limits site distance for pedestrians crossing Sixth Street between their respective sites. I would say that's more of an enforcement issue, a possession issue. Somebody should pick the phone up, call the police department if there's a problem with that. That bus is utilized for the school across the street.
So, everything besides the end of page three and the small paragraph of page four, you agree?
That's, that's exactly what I had said before.
Okay, and I just want to be clear for the record, no less, or helping Mr. Hirsch has it allowed, most of the things we agree to, right?
Mr. Weins said the last comment on page two is also unacceptable.
That's the last. Move it, move it to the sidewalk area.
It's the last bullet point on page two. So, that's three items. Number two, the shift, the loading area can be eight instead of nine. Do you agree with the loading area being eight instead of nine?
No.
No, okay, so the whole bullet point is no.
Correct.
And then directing to page three, the portion just to the right of the picture, you agree with everything except that providing a raised crosswalk with flashing cross warning signs on Sixth Street? That's off-site. And then.
And I think also they don't agree to move the poles.
That's wrong. That's a question. We don't agree to move the tele, the telepoles.
I think that's even on the record, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, where is that? The.
On page, page two, bullet point three, or portion of bullet point three. To the bottom of that next.
This change made in the main necessity, two utility poles next to the driveway.
I think your testimony was that they made a driveway, you worked around it, you could leave the poles on the driveway works.
Yes.
And the turning lane for events.
Yes, they don't, they don't, they don't indicate a left-hand turn in the.
Chairman?
Yes.
I can add a couple of thoughts, and I want to stress, I have not done a detailed review of the revised.
Mr. Bo, could you please speak earlier? I'm sorry, I can make it pick up. I'm sorry.
I want to stress that I have not done a detailed review of the revised design, nor if I had the chance to go over Mr. Dean's comments with Mr. Dean. It sounds like you have a report done by Mr. Dean, June tenth. You have a revised plan provided by Mr. Weins that was revised July twenty-sixth. So, it's out. I'm, I'm assuming that Mr. Dean has not seen this plan from his.
So, every, every revised plans, everything on this report is in the revised plan?
Everything on.
It's on the. Why it was emailed to Mr. Hirsch and Mr. Dean.
Chairman, how was that?
All right, well, hold on one minute. Hold on one minute. Just. You say everything was emailed to Mr. Hirsch. When?
That was before last year.
Mr. Hirsch, did you get this plan and have you seen it with Mr. Dean?
That's why you've got a Congress call.
Well, let's, let's hear it from Mr. Hirsch.
As I said, after Mr. Dean, earlier on tonight, after Mr. Dean submitted this report, you know, with his revised plan on the last page, he actually marked up a plan for them to be consistent.
Yeah, that's on the very last page.
The last page. What I believe we received was a response from Mr. Weins assuming that made some notations on that plan as to some of the changes that were agreed to. Mr. Dean advised me at the time, he did not agree to everything he requested. He wanted to discuss it further to see if they could work out a couple of the other issues that still remain.
Okay.
And that number occurred.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bo, you were about to proceed.
Sorry, Terry.
I want to continue my thought and just bear, just bear with me.
Yeah, please.
I'm looking at the second, the last paragraph on page three of Mr. Dean's report, the topic of the raised crosswalk, the flashing school. It says that he spoke with the crossing guard. All right, the crossing guard is someone that I would refer to as someone having institutional knowledge. I would assume that the, that guard would not make the comments suggesting something, in this case, a raised sidewalk, because of the concern of the way that it's functioning. A raised crosswalk may not be the best solution for reasons that the board members have said. There are other methods of traffic calming that it may be worth exploring. You could do a beacon. I think, I think that's what Mr. Dean is talking about, you know, school crossing warning signs. You could do traffic beacons. You could do regular fluorescent striping. That's not raised, that doesn't obstruct vehicles. We do designing work in the town, as you're aware, not just reviews. We routinely interact with traffic and safety to get their input, to make sure that we're doing what's best for the town, what's best for local traffic. I'm, I'm not saying that this should be borne exclusively by the applicant, but there should be some mechanism that if the board approves this, there should be further review and maybe something shared between the applicant and the town. If something like a beacon, like a fluorescent striped sidewalk, like something is warranted here, I'm not out there every day personally, this crossing guard is. I'm taking what Mr. Dean's telling me at face value. I'm saying it should be explored as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
To the chair, there is something on prospect near the hospital. It might be an idea that they do have when someone tries to cross, there's a button to push the lights up.
Yeah.
The crosswalk. And it's not raised, but it is painted over striped and, you know, that's, that's very.
There's all kinds of. You can put in a solar beacon, a solar charge, and people can, can activate, just like you were talking about. You could put a fluorescent striping that you can see day and night. It doesn't have to be raised. I mean, people like speed bumps, others don't like those speed bumps, et cetera. There's all kinds of different options.
That's some of the township's purview.
That's some of the township's purview in that they own and operate Sixth Street. I want to, I recommend that an investigation with cooperation with the applicant be part of this if approval is ready.
To the chair. I would make the one that might be prudent. Do you agree that traffic calming is a good thing? The applicant, the objector.
Not necessarily raised sidewalk. It could be.
So, I'm usually an opponent of figuring things out during resolution compliance. It's sloppy, but maybe in this situation, we approve that the applicant implement traffic calming mechanisms suitable to you and not.
Morely the township's.
No, no, but also maybe the, Mr. Dean can participate in that discussion of what the appropriate traffic calming mechanism should be. Though I'm just the applicant's guru, Mr. Dean is.
Well, I see thanks to the township, sir.
Well, I think.
Take the whole.
I think the whole, the whole place has got to be the township, isn't it?
Yeah. This is plenty of county too. They request, they, they ask for.
That's a very good point.
Doing something calming out of traffic, but they, they request, and you put in something they deem common.
So, we'll request it. Mr. Ackerman's here, but it won't be a condition on the approval because they can't control the request. Yeah.
And, and Mr. Reddick brings up a good point. The applicant doesn't have the control over it, the township does. But all they can do, all we can do is make the recommendation that the whole gang get together.
Mr. Jackson, who's responsible to pay for?
Mr. Ackerman is.
I think Mr. Ackerman just said you cut out, Mr. Jackson.
Um, I, I don't know that, that's above my pay grade.
No, that's what I'm saying.
But it's an off-site improvement.
Should the township say we want to.
Spoken by yourselves, that's pretty good.
They would take a day, week payment. There's no argument.
That, that's between the township and the applicant, it's an off-site improvement.
Of course. I, I will point out in the report that this plate, this school has been operating for almost three years now, and there has not been one incident.
And James said like that.
When I hear a traffic guard say that, I get a little nervous.
Yeah. That's the reality of things. We're talking about children that have been escorted by their parents across the street. There's a congregation directly across the street that gets a lot, a lot of traffic as well, and I don't think they're looking for any type of control devices on the street for congregants going into that facility on days of worship.
Now that I learned a new concept about traffic calming, I really want to see the calm down drivers on nine, they're sitting.
You have to get DMTs approval. You think the town's there? Good luck.
Okay. Mr. Shea, are we finished with you?
I think I'll listen for it. If members have any questions regarding.
I'd like to have Mr. Hirsch come up here. Anything else to say? Then you can speak again. Mr. Hirsch, would you like to come to the mic? Would you like to stay there?
Can I use this one or that?
Yeah, whatever you want. Just hold the mic close. I just have to turn my chair to the face, that's it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify with Mr. Weins, or, or Mr. Shea, did you, was there any title work done so we know exactly that alleyway, the apartments own any portion of that? If their property lines go in within that area?
There's a, we did do title work as a matter of fact, and I can represent that that roadway is owned by the town, was utilized by, by that parking complex, time and memorial, it's been utilized actually by residents of Sixth Street, including a driver by Teno who drives through there regularly as well. And so, it's been, that access point has been there for many, many, many.
I, I understand that, that's not what I'm asking. I just wanted to be clear whether, we know it's not just the township giving consent to their property, but whether the apartment buildings, their property lines either a foot, six inches go into that area, that would be part of it. That's all I'm trying to find out.
That's, that has not been indicated in your survey.
All right. My understanding was that he did own some of it, but I don't know the answer to it. But I'm just saying that's something that has to be verified. The other.
The applicant, if it's not the township property, it belongs to the apartment, they can't, they can't use it.
Well, that's what I'm not sure.
They're representing that it belongs to the township, and they can ask the township for permission.
I, I think that's also set for the Mr. Hirsch report.
Well, for sure, for sure, that's true. I'm not arguing that. I just didn't know, your parking's at a foot under your side, that's all. So, we're clear on what approvals are needed. We understand the township has to prove it, Mr. Bo, on both sides. The other thing is, Mr. Weins, did you review the, the site visually in terms of whether there's any cars parked up and down that alleyway by the apartments?
There's a problem as well. That's mine.
No, I'm sorry, lines. I, I apologize.
I was out to the site twice. One, first time I was there, there was nobody parked in the, in that access eastward. Second time, there was one car parked in the eastward. But there's also about fifteen to twenty feet between the township property and the apartment building. So, if it's signed and striped for no parking, those apartment people could just park on the left side rather than the right side.
Well, that's what I'm not clear about. Are you saying that the apartments do own certain property that the people can park in? I'm asking, I'm clarifying.
Hold on, we're going to spend more time with this. Just answer again, indulge it.
You said the township was twenty-five feet. So, you're saying the apartment has. There's a total of forty-five. There's a total of forty feet.
Okay. If you, this is where the access section, the township property is. There's about the same amount of room between the property line and the back of this apartment building that's paved. So like I said...
What's the total opening? What belongs to the apartment and what the township owns?
It's probably...
Roughly.
Forty to fifty feet.
Forty. Let's say forty. So you're stipulating that twenty-five belongs to the township, and that's what they're using for the driveway.
Yes.
The rest doesn't belong to them, and you're not using it.
We're not, we don't need to use that at all. But the issue, what I was saying is, because there's no signs that say no parking, and there's no stripes that, you know, yellow stripes identify it as a no parking zone, people do park there, but there is space for them to park.
You can't even strike because it doesn't, you don't own the property. You can't strike that fifth.
Well, we wouldn't strike the apartment. We would request the township allow us to strike the access side for no parking. And Mr. Dean's letter doesn't recommend parking sign.
The record should reflect that the board members were looking at a Google Earth image of this driveway we're talking about. That Mr. Stern was good enough to provide on his computer.
Twenty-five feet that does not belong to the apartment, which nobody's allowed to...
Only a driveway. Correct. That is the township.
Yes, the point was, Mr. Dean suggested that there be no parking signs requested that the township put in that area. Remember, as you pointed out, it can be two-way traffic with cars coming in, cars going out from the school.
I think it should be...
So they even suggested no parking, so they have...
And I think it should be striped as a one-way avenue.
But they're coming in from Seventh Avenue. Cars are still coming in. The school is going out in Sixth, out to Seventh.
I think they testified that the apartment building is coming in from the other side of the building.
No, they come in from Seventh Avenue and then out.
For sure.
You know, let, hold on a second. I see everyone in the audience shaking their heads. Just cool them. We're giving Mr. Hirsch some latitude. He's very knowledgeable of this. He's spoken to his clients. His clients aren't here, so let's just listen to him and give him some respect. Mr. Hirsch, what were you going to say?
Seventh and Sixth is a street.
The concern that Mr. Dean is pointing out, you have this alleyway that goes from Sixth to Seventh, okay? It goes over the school's property. They have a gate out, and then it continues on down to the apartments. And you're like, cars come in, and Mr. Shay said, the only one down. Cars pull in off Seventh and in towards Sixth, okay? They may be going onto their property out and exiting Sixth. Putting that aside...
That's not what I...
Let's let him finish.
Putting that aside, when they come out from their property, they come in Sixth, they leave the school property, now they're on the borough property, township property, and they're heading out. It's fine. We're not objecting to it. We're trying to make it safe. So you have potential two-way traffic, as you pointed out, Chairman. The other one's coming out of the parking lot on Seventh, but there's cars coming in Seventh. So they just said, make sure in the roadway that's owned by the municipality that you'll be using if this is all approved. There's no parking sign, so you're not further having two-way traffic and cars parked on both sides. Because we would have shown you tonight, if I had my witnesses, the photographs, the cars parked up and down that alley.
So as, I'm sorry, Mr.... So as I understand, your request is that that be identified as a no parking area.
Parking is raised in these reports.
And that that, and I thought you had agreed.
Mr. Jackson? We didn't agree to have no parking area on this property outside the school.
Would you agree to make the request to the committee for that?
If it's somebody else's property, we would request that's more of a roadway.
Mr. Jackson, there's twenty-five feet that belongs to the township. There's fifteen that belongs to the apartment building.
Right. So the question as far as the attachment, is there...
Well, I would request also they should pass the township to make it a one-way. No, they should come in Seventh Street. It's only twenty-five feet. I don't think, you don't want two-way traffic coming in.
The chair, I think, if I can ask a clarifying question. I understood that you've got traffic coming in to the apartment complex. An apartment complex on Seventh, Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
We've got the parking for this apartment building.
Mr. Stern, could you show them on the board with the aerial? That might do better.
I understood...
So we're looking at...
Please speak into the microphone.
We're Seventh. So you have these two apartment complexes here. This is their shared parking, okay? I believe your testimony was that traffic is coming on Seventh, turning into this parking lot. They do whatever they're doing, but they leave at night. They go through here, the alleyway, and they take a left back on to Seventh.
Hold on. Will you take a timeout for one minute? I think Mr. Ackerman got cut off.
It's a...
Hold on. We got to wait until he can hear the... We got to take a two-minute break.
Fellas, take a break.
Yes, break a little more if you'd like. You got to hold up like one minute, not even, right? You heard Mr. Stern, you were... Okay, yeah, so, all right, so he didn't miss anything.
So, I think, I think we're just disconnecting. I believe testimony you, the applicant made, is people coming in from Seventh, Seventh. Indeed, they're parking here. This is the apartment, both these apartment complexes. Then they lead through this park seat here. The alleyways to the south of both apartment buildings, they take a left on which I believe is a one-way street. And then they go out. So my question I had earlier was, these two are merging, but I didn't realize they're already using this. So, and then the no parking issue is, you can't see it here, but it jags in. So there may indeed be parking here. It's wired here than it is at the exit. So people are parking here on the apartment's property. This is the township land.
That's why I asked that question, whether it was all township land or not.
It's not part of this, and part of the township.
Now, what's my question? And they said it all was. But what I'm saying is, this is Sixth here, right?
Yeah.
And this is Seventh up here. All right. What I'm saying is, and we would have a photo of the video, these cars are parked all along on both sides.
Definitely.
And then traffic, both come down here, okay? Traffic comes in Seventh. We observed it. Mr. Dean observed it. Traffic does come in.
Mr. Shay, would you agree to the request from the township to strike the only one?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
There should only be one way. It should only be one way.
Hold on, timeout one minute. Mr. Hirsch was saying something. And he guys...
We understand...
Answer the microphone, please.
Township property, a request has to be made, and the township has to approve it, see if this whole site plan works. It's the most critical element.
Hold on. We got to take a minute. Someone just went to the metro.
Sorry.
And incidentally, can hear in the metro. I know that. You're standing. All right, we're back. The board of commissioners, Chairman, and you'll see. Mr. Hirsch, you want to say something?
So, I'm saying that the traffic circulation, at least from our viewpoint, I believe yours, is the most critical aspect for the safety of children and the pedestrian and the traffic, cars coming in. All right, so their design is to make it one-way coming in through Sixth, because now they've come out Sixth. That was one of our recommendations, and they agree. Then they go past their property to go to Seventh, which we discussed is the township's property. We're suggesting no parking on the township's property. They can't control the private property, or I don't know what the status of that is. So, because you do have incoming traffic. Now, if someone wants to suggest make, when you leave the applicant's property, make that all one-way so people can't come in Seventh toward Sixth, it's fine with us, but I don't know if that's real listening. If they'll do it, that's great. You know, so you just have the traffic going out? We agree with that. We're not demanding it. I mean, we're just saying that makes sense. But if it's going to be two-way, that's what we're addressing, that the conflict, the cars parked, cars coming in, cars coming out.
The applicant agreed to take the request from the township to stripe it. Exstripes, avenue only one. We got one over right there at three o'clock in the morning.
You see, I mean, a board can approve or require off-site improvements. Yes, they can, subject to the county or the governing body or whatever. They say, but this is the world. We need an off-site improvement. You can do that as part of what you're doing, yes, because you've got to be a firm approval, but it doesn't mean you can't address it. I mean, I don't agree with you.
No, we agree that it could be one-way. The question is, would the township also indicate it might go the other direction? I don't believe they would. Request that. There's obviously nothing to say no. There's always this obvious thing to say no.
That's fine. It's great. It's good for them, I think, and it's a safer, it's a safer traffic situation.
You would make a request to the township?
I worry about it so much.
Okay. So, the idea of the traffic pattering on that road, you discussed it earlier. Well, that's up to the town. No, this is part of the site plan.
All right, I understand what you're saying.
You guys have control. You guys have control. Even though that...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Hirsch. Mr. Hirsch. You're suggesting that the board make that a condition of approval, that they obtain the ability, not just make the request. You want that, you're saying that this board has authority to make that a condition of approval?
Yeah.
And it become one-way.
The applicant is coming to you with a plan to...
Should we...
...property. That's his plan. So he's got the obligation, you do, to say, then as part of this approval, that's a requirement. Now, yes, you have to go get it approved, but we're going to require it, because that's what you're asking for. This is your...
We understand your point, Mr. Hirsch. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Hirsch, would you?
Well, you know, again, I want to try to be traffickers for things Mr. Dean's not here. The one they disagree with was the backing up that fifteen feet. Mr. Dean believes it's required for safer backing out movements from the parking spaces. You know, that's what that was about. And I wasn't quite clear about the response to the one about the additional grading and removal of trees in the corner. Mr. Lyons, I'm not sure I heard what your response to that was. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yes. There's two, you brought two issues on the board. One with regard to making sure there's a fifteen-foot gap between the crosswalk and the loading zone or the drop-off area. I don't see that as a problem because the cars have twenty-three, or I'm sorry, twenty-eight feet to back up and make the turning movement and go out. I don't see the moving this loading zone and making a foot power or whatever. I don't see, I don't agree with this analysis that it has to do with that. I don't get any agreement.
All right, so he's, this is our driving expert thing, so minimum fifteen feet between the corner, the path walkway, and the nearest, I guess, corner that should be of the unloading space, loading space. There should be a minimum fifteen feet. Again, Mr. Dean's not here. I can't, he's the expert, not me.
I can't offer an opinion. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Mr. Lyons. Based on your plan that's revised through July twenty-sixth, what distance are you...
Twelve feet.
So the difference, you have a difference of opinion between Mr. Newley saying twelve feet is adequate and Mr. Dean saying fifteen feet is adequate.
Right, because I don't think, I don't think there's any benefit to moving this three feet to the north. Then it gets closer to the exit, where the cars are coming out. So I'm squeezing the other end and putting the unloading, loading zone sort of in the way of the driveway. I don't, I don't think it's such a big issue of a park backing out and having twenty-eight feet to make a back out and, you know, turn, break, I guess, a less turning movement to go out to Seventh Street. I just don't see the, twenty-eight feet's a lot of room. That's, that's, that's the width of the street.
When you say twenty-eight, that's one roof.
That happened in a parking lot. You put a parking lot, I was twenty-five.
Twenty-eight is a little room.
Mr. Vogt, what's your, what's your opinion?
Mr. Vogt's opinion's going to be, I'm going to review this during compliance.
Do you feel between you, Mr. Lyons, and Mr. Dean, you can work out something that should work out?
I believe that we can.
That you could work something out?
Yes.
Okay. You agree to work it out with Mr....
I think Mr. Lyte, during the beginning, four feet works, you know, I think I'll change that later.
I don't like that answer.
It may have to be some... Maybe have to be a compromise. You agree to work it out?
He'll work it out.
Okay.
I like that answer.
We're not going to, we're not going to stand and agree to, this is voters, one thing, it's plenty of red here. I'm not, we're not going to be held hostage by a, by a, I think, traffic entry.
No, but you'll be willing to sit down for him to have input with Mr....
Sure.
That's all we're talking about.
Yeah, hypothetically speaking, Mr. Dean may say, you know what? I really like fifteen feet, but if you do this instead, I'll be happy. Let's try and find some middle ground.
Unfortunately, if we had the one more, you know, back and forth, it might have all been resolved. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. So, I'm sorry, were you in the middle of something? I don't want to interrupt you.
Your other question was about the grading and the trees in the back.
Yeah.
We have those identified as to be removed.
Okay. I just didn't hear you before. Thank you. The other one, do you agree with the no-through-traffic sign at both ends of the traffic center driveway? That was one of the recommendations. I don't recall what you said about that.
We added those. I have no objection.
Okay.
Yeah.
You would agree to that requirement, I think it was number eight. The last comment I think I had was this question about the school bus. So we're all feeling that, why Mr. Dean put it in? Let me explain.
No problem.
Pardon?
No, I said go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a hard time.
Listen, if that's the point, there's no school buses.
No, there's clearly a school bus that's parked there all day. It makes, not all day, it makes drop-offs and delivers, drop off for students and pickup. But then it sits there all day, even though there's a no standing sign. Mr. Dean has witnessed it, and what he was pointing out is, there's no reason that that bus should be there during the drop-off of the students and the pickup of the students because they have to come around the bus, and he's saying they're blind to the traffic. And it's the same owner. We can say it's not us. Everybody knows the school is owned by the same entity.
Does the applicant agree if there is, was a bus or not, or won't be a bus to be...
That bus, it belongs to the other school. The voluntary contention with respect to other litigation, it's moved on a regular basis to utilize to transport children. That's not accurate, is what you're saying.
Could we, could we be there when this drop-off of these kids are...
So they want to park it there.
And very frankly, it's an off-site issue.
Can be moved a little further down the block in some areas.
And the police department has an issue with that. There's a site issue in any way, shape, or form. The code enforcement people can be contacted, and they can deal with it. My understanding is that it's already been dealt with a number of times, and the police department indicated, does have.
So we'll have to put this on the list as something where the parties do not agree.
May I ask a question, Chairman?
Mr. Vogt is, well, I'm...
Yeah, a question. There's a bus that's here during the day that's not on planes.
There's a bus across the street. Has nothing to do with this site.
It's not on this property.
Not on this property.
All right, thank you.
There's no buses that...
And I think Mr. Hirsch's point is it's owned by the same entity. He thinks it's a traffic safety issue.
Yes, exactly. The applicant has gone with pains to say that new residents, which had one question on it, for the dean's residence, that this is part of the campus of the school, is what he's argued, not only in court, but he argued at the first hearing of this board, this is part of the same school campus. Now, all of a sudden, we don't have anything to do with that school. So it's not part of the same school campus, and this, in terms of the dean's residence, being in that three-story building.
Is there a drop-off for this school across the street, or it's only on-site?
Is it across the street? Has nothing to do with the site.
So the kids, and I think we remember from last time, there was something about the kids crossing at that intersection, which is why we're trying to put in crosswalks. Why are they crossing? What time of day are they crossing, I think?
I don't think it is.
It's seven, five.
Why are we discussing a crosswalk if there aren't people crossing? Why are we discussing a crosswalk if there are not people crossing?
Well, there's people crossing without doubt.
Who are these people?
My point is that has nothing to do with the buses. The buses are not interfering with anything.
Are there buses dropping on people that are making the people cross?
No. The buses, there's no buses dropping any children on the site.
What, what age children are in the trains?
Preschool, from two, like half of those.
Counselor, once I've said that, then I'll draw a screen.
With their parents, pretty much, drop off with their parents or...
Counselor, I think your client's trying to get your attention.
Counselor, I think your client's trying to get your attention. Why don't you take a minute?
I got that morning from the operator, just a question right all day.
I live in that... Rabbi, you have to be sworn in.
I live in the preschool.
You still have to be sworn in.
Sir.
You have to be affirmed.
Please state your name and confirm.
Justin Percy.
Please raise your right hand to confirm testimony to give before the board with the whole truth and unproven truth. And sir, you're affiliated with the applicant?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Shea has a question for you.
I live in that three-story building. And there are no buses there. There may be a bus either from this school, this school, this school. The little children don't have buses. They don't have...
What is the age of the children? That question was asked of Mr. Shea, I see. What's the age of the kids that are going through this proposed?
Preschool, pre elementary school.
Would your age is what to what?
Probably a 3-5-year-old.
Do 5-year-olds take buses?
They don't go buses. The oldest kid that keeps staying on that pre elementary bus. There may be a driver from across the street or from somewhere else that had a used bathroom and stopped a leftover there. But there's no... I lived there. There's no buses on the property.
Dean, did I answer the question, Chairman?
There's confusion with this. I'm not saying that the children in the nursery school are on a bus. The bus clearly is servicing the school across the street, the grade school. But if my witnesses were here and the photographs, each of that bus is there essentially the entire day, except when it's making drop-offs and pickups.
Can you come up to the aerial photograph and show us where the bus is parked?
Does everyone understand? I think it's not on the side of the street where this property is. It's on the other side of the street, where the other school...
Where the kids cross Sixth Avenue. Exactly where they would be crossing to go to the...
That testifies that there's any children crossing the street?
That's why I asked, is it 2-year-olds?
These children are not crossing the street?
No.
Hold on a second. Hold on. Mr. Shea, please. The chairman's asking a question of Mr. Hirsch, you'll get your chance. Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Chairman had a question for you, Mr. Racington.
Is there only 2-year-old kids for the trails who are not crossing?
No, no. It's the children going to the daycare with their, either their parents or mother, father, some of them being pushed in carriages, whatever. It's that traffic, the pedestrian traffic, that walks from Sixth Street on the other side of Sixth Street where the synagogue is, they come across, and they walk right past where the bus is, into the street.
They're not crossed by the corner, by the light? There's a light in that corner. So that means your parents are on the bus, that's their responsibility, and the parents are not going with the bus? There's a corner there, you cross by, there's a light, there's a crosswalk.
But that...
Well, if your parents say a bus is proud for parents who are irresponsible.
All we're pointing out to the court and to the applicant is where the safety issues are. This is what Mr. Dean observed and the rabbi observed. People come, the children coming out, being thrown real buses right into Sixth Street to go across the street. We know there's a corner, people should go, but they don't.
Mr. Hirsch, I have a question for you.
Why would the bus there?
Mr. Hirsch, this is a practical... This is a practical enforcement issue, though. This is their site plan. We can govern what they do with their site. All representations are that this is a separate entity and it's parked across the street. So we can put in our resolution, you know, the bus shall not park across the street. It's got nothing to do with them.
I disagree wholeheartedly. This is the same operation. They claim this is all part of their campus.
Who owns the bus?
But look, it's up to you. I don't want to belabor this.
Who owns the bus?
I don't want to belabor.
Who owns the bus?
We are pointing out a safety factor, and it's up to you to call.
I'm not arguing with you. I just want to know, if I put that in the resolution, though, and it's a separate corporate entity across the street, how do I enforce that? How does anybody enforce a condition on this site on what the separate entity across the street does?
Because what I'm telling you is a matter of record. They have argued that that school and their operation are one and the same, as part of the same campus. That's what they argue.
I understand you. Counselor, we don't apply race judicata for a car sitting on a public street across the street.
I want to turn this to Mr. Shea. If we put that in your resolution that says this applicant shall not allow a bus from the entity across the street to park, you know, across the street, how does that affect your...
It's not... It's nothing to do with the...
But the question is, what's the downside to your application?
It's not... We have no control.
All right, I'll move on.
The other thing is...
The last question I have... Oh, I'm sorry.
He's quite good to say.
You let your whole testimony here, the language is...
I have this question, want to answer it or not?
Go ahead, question, one question.
I just want to be clear. I understood the application to say, this is a revised plan to change the three-story structure to a dean's residence, okay? I just want to be clear, if that use is now going to be a single-family home because it's now currently listed as a multifamily dwelling, and therefore there will be multiple families in it, it's going to be for the dean's residence, is their terminology. Now, I realize they have a conference room, and they have teachers coming over for meetings or whatever. I'm not talking about that. But that this is a single-family...
In other words, just one dwelling in it?
Yeah, that's what I want to be clear about. That's what the application seems to say.
That's a fair question. Fair question, fair answer, as I've indicated, is the dean's residence with administrative offices. For one household. One dwelling. Okay. One dwelling. Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, that's all I wanted to be clear, because we didn't want it after that several families there because that's what it's owned for, now it's a parking lot.
And that's their site plan?
Well, interesting, just in order to work this, these two lots... These two lots are being consolidated as well, in one. So it's going to be one lot, which one of the residents of all this. And just to answer the other question that was addressed before, I apologize about having a... I want to tell them, but the age groups are 2 and 1/2 to 13 years old.
13-year-old, we don't have.
A district that's a preschool.
And what? What's 2 to 13?
2 and 1/2 to 13.
Is 13?
That's right.
It's very... 3 to 13?
No, that's just the one that's they granted, like the license is only...
If the license grants 2 and 1/2 to 13 years old, that's the license. That's not used for that age. That's right.
Your site plan approval, I think it says a condition that it be 2-year-olds to 5-year-olds.
That's right.
The only recommendation, one thing I would like to add to that, I think you testified as Mr. Lyons, there's a gate at the end of the property before it goes into the township driveway. It's a 15-foot gate?
People, the parents are looking there.
Right, it's 15-foot gate then?
Well, I would like to... The argument is saying that it needs to be hit with light, can't you?
Yeah, I would like that 15-foot gate to be closed while the kids... Only, but it should only be opened by drop-off. I don't want it to be a driveway going through for the township or cut through the whole day. It should only be opened when the... When this drop-off and pickup, 9 o'clock, 3 o'clock, whenever it is.
I think it's like 11:00.
Whatever the hours are. The kids are coming in and out of it. It's not safe that people join the...
But we... Parents, they can't get out.
They could get out, there's a gate on their property. I don't want them to cut through from 7:00 coming down to 6:00. I want that gate to be closed. It should only be open when the school needs it to be open. It should be a teacher opening it up and closing it.
That way we're good.
Okay? The apartments could still use the driveway without any kids running out and being hurt.
That's right.
Is that correct, Mr. Lyons?
Yes, the apartments are not here, are sighted. The gate is basically at the property. So, yes, that'll be closed during the...
Any other questions, any board members?
I want clarification. Is the crossing going to pick up and drop off, correct?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shea, any closing statements?
We have to open it to the public.
I don't know, okay. Any board members have any questions? Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application? Do you have to...
You know, are you affiliated with that?
No.
All right, please state your name.
One second. Mr. Jackson, I'd like you to check your computer to get any emails. We're not doing that.
No, this is not a virtual meeting, this is a live meeting.
It's a live meeting, okay. You have to be affirmed, then please state your name and address.
Jack O'Winger, 3th line of reality.
Please spell your last name.
W E N G R.
All right, please proceed. Do you have a chairman's permission to be affirmed? Oh, I'm sorry. Please, can you affirm testimony to give before the board with the truth and all due consideration?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Please go right to the microphone, so committee of the next round here.
The objectors attorney, I believe, said in the beginning of the hearing tonight that there's no agenda and there's no acts to be drawn. I think I was trying to quote the words he said. I don't think anyone here, everyone here knows what's going on. The objectors have been challenging in every possible way.
This has nothing to do with the application. It's one of the merits of the conditions. That's not... That's not... Shouldn't be part of the record.
I want to talk on the record, so I mean...
But I'm not going to allow you to talk about that, about the animosity, the history, whatever, what the objectors are. If you want to talk about the site plan, the lighting, the circulation, the buildings, the fences, etc.
Yeah, so I want to talk about the traffic safety concerns that the objector has. And I want to include that there's... The objectors, the objector has been driving on sidewalks and curbs, and there's video recordings of that, and I would like to put it in here somewhere.
Well, but the objectors' case is not before the board.
I'm talking about traffic and safety concern that I would like included with this application that there should be nobody driving on sidewalks, nobody driving on curbs, nobody driving the wrong way in traffic, and we're worried about pedestrians right away. And there should be nobody driving when kids are crossing the street, nobody driving onto them. And I think this is something that this has to do with this application. We discussed it all night, and I would like to put in that vision. I'm a concerned citizen in town. I see people, people driving on sidewalks, people driving on curbs. I want to make sure that the school is going to be safe, that no one's going to drive on... No one from any entity is going to drive on a curb, on a sidewalk, anywhere that can injure anybody. And I would like the board to consider putting that into the application. I think it's a fair request.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application? See, now we're closing that public?
Mr. Hirsch, the chairman has closed the hearing to the public. You know, do you have anything that you would like to add, or were you... I know your witness wasn't here, I think you were able to make your representation. Were you satisfied at this point? Did the board keep moving forward, or is there anything you would like to put on the record at this point?
Well, I think some of the... Whatever requests that as part of the resolution of compliance is suggested by Mr. Vogt that on the traffic issues, that Mr. Dean can have some input, like he would have had tonight if he were here. I mean, the recommendations, I'm not saying he's been a... Nobody's holding the other side hostage. We're just trying to come up with a good, safe plan, and it can be compromised on different issues. But it'd be nice to hear from an expert traffic engineer as to why certain things are helpful. That's what this is about.
Mr. Vogt, do you have any objection to inviting Mr. Dean to that discussion?
No, I'm saying Mr. Dean's input was reasonable. The difference, I believe, is we're not going to treat Mr. Dean as an outside agent to prove.
Right, right, I got you. He'll just have a seat at the table, and you'll listen, attend to him.
Mr. Lyons agrees with us.
Yes, so... Anything else, Mr. Hirsch?
No, I mean, you know, I don't have him here to respond to anything that we've heard. In my viewpoint, I have nothing else, nothing else bad on this.
All right, so just one procedural matter, whether we have enough people to vote. In my view, the matter was bifurcated. It's, I would analogize it to a waiver request. We, the board made a vote on a jurisdictional issue. I don't think those issues relate to the merits of the application. The full merits of the application weren't presented tonight. I think all five members who were here heard that and can vote on it. I think it's reasonably segregated from the original jurisdictional request and... or interesting. But that's the board's determination. My recommendation is that you can go with the members, but, you know, that's just my recommendation. It's up to the board whether they're comfortable going forward with...
Mr. Ackerman, review the video from the previous meeting, then all questions are answered.
Yeah, and I think that would be what Hirsch had argued before the beginning of the meeting, but...
Nothing changes from that testimony to the merits of this application.
So the question is, is the board satisfied with going to a vote now before we ask Mr. Shea to do the summation with voting with the five members based on Mr. Ackerman hearing only tonight's portion?
Yes, Mr.... So are you ready to vote tonight?
I... My gut tells me yes, but we might want to... I guess it doesn't do good to ask Mr. Ackerman after the fact.
It does. Mr. Ackerman, Mr. Stern has requested that you indicate whether you're satisfied having heard the testimony tonight, you know, specific to the site, whether you would be comfortable voting on this application tonight.
No, I don't. Got the fact, but take the line on it, I can vote on it.
Okay. So what's the board's consensus on that threshold issue? Or you could come back at the next meeting after committed and Ackerman has had the opportunity to listen, and you could just take the vote then. But it's your choice, it's the board's discretion.
That's your opinion. I'm fine with it.
I'm fine for a vote.
Okay, I think the consensus of the board that we're trying to take a vote tonight, but the applicant has to know that... Would the applicant have an opinion? Because one is more vote approved legally, and one is more expeditions. Are you taking the risk?
No, I think we're taking the risk. I would like to vote tonight.
You'd like to vote?
We're all standing to the issues, and I don't like another night's talk of change.
Do you feel comfortable that even though we've accepted enough here of the original meeting, that we can vote on it tonight?
I do, I agree.
And you're right for your issue.
My issue.
And you're voting, you asking for a vote tonight?
Yes.
And Mr. Hirsch made his arguments, you reserve that. I know we made your objection, but he did a lot of...
Yeah, I made my points on the record, I'm not going to be...
You have to change your mind, I just wanted to point that out. He's being professional about it. He made his arguments for the record.
So we share, just one question. Mr. Wender had indicated that there was people parking, perhaps on sidewalks and curbs or whatever else is. Is he referring to this property that we're discussing, or is he referring to across the street?
I think he was referring to everyone, but especially the objectors. Is that correct, Mr. Hirsch? It's not a question of who, the question is where, is he referring to specifically?
Everyone, everywhere.
It's across the street. We don't have, we're not talking about that property.
Everyone, everywhere. It's like.
We don't have, we're not focusing on that tonight either. Of course, you're right, but. Question, specifically on this property, is there a curb or sidewalk or something in this property that we're discussing tonight that you're concerned of that someone's going to park or go the wrong way on?
If anybody caused the curbs, you should call the cops. There's nothing to do with that.
Alright, so.
I don't see people driving on sidewalks. The people do. They should.
With those procedural matters having been determined by the board, I recommend that you have Mr. Shea make his closing.
Which was it?
I think you may disclose it on the record. Very briefly, I think the board gets the application. Application basis is very straightforward, simple applications. So a variance that's point four inches, I believe it is. There's several design verims associated with the application. It's a site exempt application, by the way. And again, a request for some waivers and variances by engineers, which I think we supplied sufficient for. We have done the extra step of making sure that the board is aware that we had a conversation with Mr. Hirsch and his, and his traffic engineer, not once but several times in a conference call regarding these issues. We went through it diligently. We were faced with a situation where we didn't want to start mending plans that were not reflective of what the discussion was. It was very frank. We didn't know which items they wanted and which items they didn't want. So we chose the items that we could live with. We indicated those on the plan. Mr. Lyons testified to them. And the conditions that we had decided on the record, we would agree to. One last question. Would this keep you in court though if he does argue the fact that it wasn't a quorum properly tonight?
You say that is what you can.
Is that worth it to say you want that vote tonight? They can have the ability of filing a prerogative reaction for any reason whatsoever. So I'm comfortable with the direction that the board is going. I spoke to Mr. Jackson about it. Every application is somewhat has issues you have to deal with. I think this application, very frankly, is pretty straightforward as an application. We feel that we have gone above and beyond what we even really have, very frankly, for the benefit of not only my clients, but also for the safety of the children as well, which is absolutely paramount to my clients. I want to make sure that we're clear. This is operated, this is not the facility that we're looking to build. This has operated for three years. So we have an absolute understanding as to how the, how the situation operates, how the children come to school, what issues are pending there are, and we address them on a day-to-day basis. So we're very, very comfortable with the application as presented and also the amendments that we made.
Okay, thank you. Attorney, any final objections?
The only other comment on, Mr. Shea, we're trying to work this out.
Also, I think we'll probably agree.
This school has been operating for those years. Unfortunately, as I said, it's a rat-a-side plan. The original plan didn't have any of these safety features, so I'm glad they were willing to listen and make changes. And the board was willing to listen. Unfortunately, the way it was, we believed it was unsafe.
And I think the final touch, they agreed to sit down with your engineer together with Terry and hopefully work out the.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I think that, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, speak up, Mr. Ackerman. Just didn't get that. Go ahead. Mr. Hirsch will give the instructions. Go ahead, Mr. Hirsch.
Mr. Jackson, you have clear, you locked down everything that the applicant agreed, what Mr. Dean requested.
Yes, I'll have to go through the minutes, but the, you know, they made certain representations. I have the numbers marked on their, Mr. Dean's. Dean, is it Dean or Dean?
Dean.
His letter.
The Dean.
What they've agreed to and what they haven't agreed to. I've also heard the board's comments about requesting one-way. Not one-way, a one-way on the township road, subject to approval from the township.
And no parking signs and the one-way?
Yes.
Okay.
And the gate.
And the gate should be closed.
Gate closed, right.
Only, it's only open to the time of pickup.
So I.
Same with that, you had that on the record. I would ask somebody to make a motion.
So I'll make a motion.
And then you want to add anything?
I'm going to try. That, I make a motion to approve, including all of Mr. Vogt's comments that were agreed to and all of the comments in the Nolan and Dean report dated June 10th, 2021 that were agreed to during the hearing by the applicant. And that we make the access road going near the apartments to Seventh Street. We asked the township that that be made a one-way street.
One-way from Sixth to.
One-way from Sixth to Seventh with abundant, no parking and one-way and all of the different.
I would like it to be striped, but we should know that it's one-way.
And we like it to be striped so that it be indicated there'd be one-way. Second, the gate between this property and the access road be open only during drop-off and pickup for the school.
For the day.
For the daycare center. I think that's it.
No buses going down the line?
It's already there.
Okay, do we have seconds?
Second. Second, Mr. Raisin, roll call.
Oh, but hang on, hang on.
Yeah, one second.
And then any, any matters that require resolution compliance, Mr. Dean from Nolan and Dean be invited to attend all such meetings and be able to offer his input. He does not have a veto, but he has the right for his voice to be heard at all such meetings.
And ultimately, it's going to be decided by Terry and traffic and safety.
Terry and.
Traffic.
And traffic and safety have the final vote and decision in their sole and absolute discretion.
Second.
Mr. Raisin, second, roll call.
Alright, I'm going to take a vote. Starting with Mr. Ackerman.
Sure. He said, I have to close to the microphone now. Repeat your vote. Great, we'll get that. He said yes. Say it one more time.
Understood. Okay, thank you. In no particular order, Mr. Raisin.
Yes.
Mr. Redd.
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
And Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Back you. The application passes by.
Mr. Chairman, I have a request. Who's going to pay my two-hour, three-hour international phone bill?
I think I just volunteered. I'm going to shut them down.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Okay.